Is there a motion to go out of work session?
Motion.
Second.
Third.
There is a motion by Supervisor King and I will say it's second by Supervisor Biggs. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Finchowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Chair.
Aye.
Settles.
Now, is there specifically, the next item on our agenda is closed meetings. Specifically be it resolved that the Montgomery County Board of Supervisors, Montgomery County, Virginia hereby enters into the closed meeting for the purposes of discussing the following under Section 2.23711. A consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provisions of a legal advice by such counsel. One, Old Blacksburg Middle School Development Agreement. Is there a motion?
Motion.
Second. There's a motion and a second.
A little dairal.
Yeah. Do I dairal? A motion by Supervisor King and a second by Supervisor Shepherd. Although, no, I'd better not do that. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Moss.
Should I vote on this? This is an issue that I have abstained from participating in conversations in the past on.
You can vote in a closed session. But you will just be.
Aye. Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Ms. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Finchowski.
Aye.
Chair.
Aye.
Settles.
Folks, I know that it's 10 after 7:00. I'm hoping that we will get started in about 15 to 20 minutes. We had an extended work session. We'll get back with you as fast as we possibly can. Thank you. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
Motion.
A motion by Supervisor King and a second by Supervisor Bone. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs.
Yes.
Ms. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Finchowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
Aye. I can aye right now.
Just can't do anything else.
Aye.
Certification of closed meetings, whereas the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas Section 2.23711 of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the Board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Montgomery County, Virginia, hereby certifies to the best of each member's knowledge, one only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification resolution applies and two only such public business matters as were identified in the motion conveying the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the Board. And what this certification is, is it's our Board's word to you that we're not talking about things that we're not supposed to talk about in closed session. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Biggs and I'll say Supervisor Bone seconded in that motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Bennett.
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd.
Aye.
Mr. King.
Aye.
Ms. Finchowski.
Aye.
Mr. Moss.
This one I have to abstain. And just to remove a little bit of the mystery, the reason that I have to abstain from this vote is because there could be benefit to our family business depending on what happens with the eventual development of the Blacksburg Middle School site.
Ms. Biggs.
Aye.
Chair.
Aye.
Six ayes, one abstain.
The next item on our agenda is a moment of silence and then the pledge of allegiance. And I'll ask the county administrator to lead us in the pledge. After we observe the moment of silence, I would ask all of you to rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much.
The next item is a presentation by John Dooley, or Dr. Dooley, excuse me, in regards to Go Virginia. Dr. Dooley?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Tuck, members of the Board. It's great to be with you and let me express my gratitude for all that you do on behalf of our county and our region. So, thank you. It's my privilege to represent the New River Valley on the Go Virginia Regional Council. I'm here this evening to give you an update on the progress of Go Virginia in our region. This is the second year of the Go Virginia Regional Council and I'm pleased to have with me also another member of the Regional Council, Marty Muscatell. Marty is here to answer all your questions. All good and great. Marty will answer the questions, okay, as such. I hope all of you have some background on Go Virginia. It is a new program for economic development that the General Assembly enacted a couple of years ago and allocated resources based upon population, okay, to regions across the Commonwealth. And so, what I'm wanting to do this evening is to primarily focus on what we're doing, okay, in this region. And I'll show you here in a second the map of the various regions. So, the sole purpose of Go Virginia is to create jobs, okay, higher, high-paying jobs, okay, and high pay means higher than the median in that region, okay? And so, the median salary, okay, compensation in our region is about $37,000. And so, what we are wanting to do is to incentivize businesses and opportunities that will create jobs, okay, that pay greater than the median. As a part of that is we don't want to find ourselves in a situation where we are stealing from other parts of the state. And so, a major focus also is to attract businesses that are currently out of state to raise the bar within the Commonwealth. Why is this important? Okay, as you can see here, there's a proven track record that incentives used to change behavior to accomplish economic goals. High-paying jobs have a significant multiplier, focusing on economic activities that bring new income into the state, just, as I said, just not shifting market. And then, areas with a strong economy, okay, even areas within the state with strong economies can be doing better. And so, the program is to be applied across the state. Here, okay, the state has been divided into nine regions, okay? And you can see here, Region 2 is our region. We span from the West Virginia border, okay, in Giles County, all the way east, okay, to Appomattox. So, it includes New River Valley, Roanoke Valley, and then Region 2000, okay, with Lynchburg. And so, within that region, okay, in Region 2000, okay, one of the major assets that we have, okay, among many assets, is we have more college students in Region 2 than any of the other regions, okay? If you look at it, you've got Virginia Tech, you've got Liberty University, you've got Radford University, you've got the other private colleges, Roanoke College, Randolph College, okay, Lynchburg University. So, one of the great assets that we have in our region is talent, okay? And so, as you will see as we go through the presentation here, one of the opportunities that we believe that we have with Go Virginia is developing programs and advancing an infrastructure that makes us more effective in keeping, retaining the talent that comes to our region to be educated. Region 2 council membership, okay, each of the regions have regional councils that are, the membership is made up primarily of business people and some educators from that region. And many of these individuals you'll be familiar with, okay? What we have done, the way that our regional council was populated, is that we distributed, okay, we created the membership based upon, okay, there's a proportionate distribution of membership based upon the population of the three regions. And so, New River Valley, okay, has six members, okay, Roanoke has 11, and Lynchburg has nine, okay? But that's based upon the population of those various regions. Each of these individuals, okay, have been recruited, okay, and are appointed by the state council. They are recommended to the state council, which is gubernatorially appointed. The role of the regional councils is first was for us to create a growth and diversification plan. And we went through about an 18-month process of looking at, of examining the critical assets that we have in this region, understanding better what we perceive to be opportunity for future growth, and built that into this diversification plan. And part of the value of the diversification plan is to give us metrics by which we will evaluate the economic development opportunities that come to us. And so, that is the critical role there. As you can see here is that additional information on the economic growth and diversification plan. We looked at what clusters might best exist in a region. And as a part of that is that we also identified the metrics by which we would measure the success. And as you can see here, again, the leading measure or metric that we will examine the success of Go Virginia is the creation of high-paying jobs in the region, the return on investment. We want external investment to help support the growth, change in business sector and cluster mix, and the percentage of job increases attributed to out-of-state revenues, okay? And so, we will be evaluating, and we are evaluating, the success of the projects in which we invest based upon these four metrics. These are the areas in which we can invest. On the left here, you can see that we can invest in existing cluster scale-ups, business-focused training and credentialing, site development, commercialization of R&amp;D, startup collaborations, incubators and accelerators, all wanting, focused on building infrastructure to build capacity. What we won't do is on the right side, okay, and this is, okay, this was not locally determined. This is all part of the Go Virginia guidance that comes out of the state. One of the things we will not do is duplicate resource or effort that is normally aligned by other state agencies, okay? Thus, we will not invest in transportation infrastructure. That's something for VDOT to handle. Trade missions, that's a VDP, okay, area. So, just wanted to make sure that you understood what the constraints under which we would give investment. Because through our growth and diversification plan, we've identified these four areas that we believe are best aligned for industry growth in our region, okay? This is across the region. Life sciences and healthcare, that should not come as a surprise, okay, with the activity that's taking place with the Virginia Tech Corollium relationship, of course, Centerra and Lynchburg, you've got tremendous, Lewis Gale, we have tremendous assets in the health sciences and healthcare area. Advanced manufacturing. We believe very much that our region can be a leader and can be very attractive to advanced manufacturing investment. Volvo, many times we take Volvo, we may take Volvo for granted. It is, we believe, a model and an impetus for additional investment in advanced manufacturing. And so, we want to leverage advanced manufacturing as one of those cluster areas. IT and emerging technologies. You have been very helpful, okay? This board has been very helpful in helping with Virginia Tech and the Virginia Tech Transportation Institute. That's in the emerging technology in particular as relates to autonomous vehicular research. Those are areas that we believe, again, our region can excel in. And we want to make sure that we make strategic investments to advance that area. And then finally, food and beverage processing. We are rich with water. One of the great natural resources that we have is we're rich with water. We have rich agricultural lands. We believe, again, that's not very much a part of our current economy. We want to find ways in which we can continue to incentivize opportunities for growth in food and beverage. So, what have we done in year one, okay? We received several proposals, the regional council, and we've made some strategic investments. And I wanted to share those with you. The first area has been in talent. I shared earlier that we have, we are blessed, okay, with significant availability of talent. And so, as you can see here, is that we've made investments in talent, both in traditional workforce activity, as well as a major effort in trying to find strategies to retain the talent for our region. So, you can see here again, the level of investment we have made. I should have mentioned earlier is that one of the requirements of the Go Virginia funding is that you must come up with match, okay? And so, the proposals that come to us must show match, okay, for us to consider the funding mechanism to support that. And so, when you see here what our investment has been, and then the other is match that has primarily come from jurisdictions, but it also includes private sector investment, which can be counted. And so, again, these are the three areas in which we have invested as relates to talent recruitment and talent retention. Again, you will see here alignment in these three areas also with the clusters that I showed you in the previous slide. Entrepreneurship. We believe very much in the growth and commitment of small business and how we can incentivize that, leveraging the research activities that are taking place at our universities to bring commercialization from opportunities there. And so, couple of the major areas in which we have invested, one is in looking at the capital ecosystem, seeing what we must do to provide additional capital for entrepreneur growth and innovation, to add to our innovation ecosystem. And then, how, one of the needs that we have identified is the need for mentorship. One of the perceived deficits in our region are what we call bankable CEOs, individuals who indeed can help those who are bringing a good idea to the marketplace and help them take it to be competitive. And so, creating a mentorship program was one of those investments that we have made this past year. And then, finally, okay, is that we have invested in two site projects. The first one is outside of Lynchburg, okay, and I guess on the border of Campbell County and Bedford County, and to build, to advance more of the energy-related activities that are unique to that area. And then, I think all of you are aware of the Woodhaven Project, okay, in Roanoke. And so, that received an investment from the regional council. Our plan for 2019, we are currently receiving proposals and encouraging proposals. One of the, as a key stakeholder, one of the roles that we would like for you to play, okay, as the Board of Supervisors, is help us identify what you perceive or see to be opportunities that would be fundable for the Go Virginia Regional Council. And so, we are in the process right now of receiving applications and we would encourage you to be thinking and be partners with us as we identify and encourage, okay, proposals to come to us. And the process is not a complicated process. We have tried purposefully not to make it overly complicated. And so, as you can see here, okay, is the initial letter of interest, okay, is a one-to-two-page letter. And then, the staff, we have engaged the Virginia Tech Office of Economic Development as a support unit for this work, and they will work with interested parties and prospective ideas, proposers, okay, with developing the proposal. In addition to helping us identify good ideas from the community, we want active local participation, and again, we encourage that. One of the things that we would, one of the things that we discovered early on is that there has been some challenge with certain proposals of getting the required match, okay, from the local governments. Simply because budgets were already approved, there were, okay, none of the local governments in our region have that level of discretionary funding available to be able to direct, okay, to these proposals that have emerged. And so, we are encouraging, as a part of our work in the coming year, is that as you work on your budget, is to consider a set aside of at least a dollar, okay, per capita to have available if indeed a viable proposal comes forward, okay, that will benefit Montgomery County, that then that you would have that money available to help meet that match. And so, that is another request, Mr. Chairman, that we are bringing to you today. That is where we are with Go Virginia in our early days. We, as I said, we consider you as an important stakeholder and partner with this. And Marty and I will be glad to entertain any questions that you may have.
I'll start off with Supervisor King. Any questions?
No questions.
Supervisor Finchowski.
Just, is broadband would be, would that be included in areas that you were looking to expand?
It would not be.
Not be?
Yeah. It would not be.
That's all I have.
Vice Chair DeMoss.
I don't have any questions. I really appreciate both of you coming this evening. I think that presentations like this give us more to put in our toolboxes so we can better serve our community. So, I really appreciate you bringing this information and giving such a great explanation.
Thank you. We're in this together.
Yes, we are.
Critical.
Supervisor Biggs.
Just three questions. How about cybersecurity? Would that fall into your...
Cybersecurity is an industry, Mary. Would it, okay, fall within this realm?
Yeah. That would be under your IT, okay.
And again, there are, that would be a part of the emerging technologies, and there are opportunities that would reside there. And we're hoping that we could help develop a cluster in this region, okay, around cybersecurity. You know, the university, as you well know, has a tremendous resource and, you know, Marty is a businessman, okay, that plays in that field, so.
Okay. And what was your cutoff date for proposals?
It's rolling.
It's rolling?
It's rolling. And what we do, Mary, Supervisor Biggs is, I'm sorry, is that...
We've only known each other for 20-some years.
Yeah. What we, last year, we had a defined deadline, okay? And we learned from that experience that we probably need to just keep a rolling, a deadline going, encouraging applicants to come in as new ideas emerge. And then, the deadline that we have to be sensitive to is review, approve, and then get it to the state council by the time of their meetings.
Okay. And then, the final question is, like, what if you have a situation like we do with our Commerce Park where we have different localities involved in trying to develop that park? And you want to have a match and per capita? How does that work? Like, do you go back to the regions involved or they had to have a matching?
Yeah. Remember, one of, I should have mentioned this earlier, is that one of the requirements is to have multiple jurisdictional engagement, okay? And so, Commerce Park is a good example of where there could be attractive benefit to that. And so, in that particular scenario, is we would go back to the participating jurisdictions or encourage the participating jurisdictions to contribute to the required match.
Yeah. Particularly thinking about site development.
Yeah.
But thank you very much for your presentation and was clear and concise, and thanks for all you're doing.
Well, it's my pleasure.
And Marty, too.
Yeah.
Supervisor Biggs.
Thank you, Dr. Dooley. Couple of questions. So, all of the funding that has been supported in this first year, there aren't, the way that I read it, there aren't specific Montgomery County benefits quite yet, or are there in some of these? I know, I see the RBTC listed, I see onward NRV. I guess what I'm saying is, like, it specifically says sometimes Lynchburg University, Lancaster Community College, you know, you don't see that for Montgomery County or the New River Valley.
At this point, Supervisor Bone, there have not been proposals that have come to us specifically supported by Montgomery County, okay? But what you do have, is particularly here as it relates to the talent, okay, is that all of these, particularly the middle, has significant implication to Montgomery County. The onward NRV is, in that particular one, Roanoke Partnership is taking the lead with it, but onward NRV is one of the participating partners with that activity. And obviously, we are including Montgomery County and the New River Valley as a part of that brings, the talent retention strategy.
So, I was surprised when we have this incredible corporate research center and all the technological businesses here in Montgomery County and the NRV, that nobody came forward considering all the great people that are on this board that just couldn't shake it out, or is it really driven by county government?
No, 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 no.
I didn't think so.
The intention is for it to be driven by the private sector. But you don't see here, there have been, were proposals that were received that were not funded, okay? And there were some proposals, okay, from, that were based in Montgomery County that did not receive funding, okay? But that doesn't mean that the proposal was dead, is that they were working with those particular interests to help bring their proposal to the point of where we can give affirmative support to those.
And then, the last question that I have is, you mentioned there's six board members from the NRV, 11 from Roanoke, and nine from Lynchburg. We're at a disadvantage, but are we really?
No.
Everybody's working collectively for the betterment of District 2, or however you say?
As you know, I've been in this thing a long time, okay? And I'm impressed with the attitude that people are coming to the table with, okay, to really work towards lifting all those, okay? And so, there, right now, there has not been this regional competitiveness, there has been an attitude of let's work together and we'll all win from it.
I lied. I do have one more question. And that is, you suggested $1 per person in the population, per capita.
A minimum.
A minimum. So, are all of the jurisdictions putting forward a dollar?
We're making that ask to all of them.
And when was that ask made? This year, right now?
Right now.
Oh, okay. So, you don't know?
Looking for FY '20.
Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, that's part of the, part of the golden pony show.
Supervisor Shepherd.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Very informative. Dr. Dooley, thank you very much for coming this evening. I will say that in your presentation, it doesn't have the word minimum, and I, my mind was already putting, okay, $100,000 is what we need to set aside roughly. Hopefully, we'll be getting news.
That's a good start.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Tuck. Thank you, board members.
Thank you.
The next item we have on our agenda is Montgomery Regional Tourism with Lisa Flickley.
Good evening, Mr. Chair.
Good evening.
Members of the board. Thank you for allowing me some time tonight to update you on our tourism effort here in Montgomery County. I really appreciated Dr. Dooley's presentation with Go Virginia and can appreciate, while no direct contributions go into things of, you know, the sort of entertainment venues and quality of life, I would like to suggest that tourism and organizations related to our program can help support some of those Go Virginia initiatives. So, glad to be here and following Dr. Dooley. So, I have some interesting data to share with you tonight. And through this information, I hope that you'll be able to gauge the health of this tourism program through annual research and monthly lodging and local tax data. You're provided, you were provided with two documents that will be highlighted tonight. I promise I won't go through every page, but it is some light reading there and we'll entertain some questions either throughout or at the end. entertain some questions either throughout or at the end. The Virginia Economic Impact Report for 2017, and the Montgomery County Visitor Profile for 2017. In addition to those two documents, we'll look at some metrics that we use in our program to benchmark the progress, along with a couple of our marketing initiatives and community projects from 2018. I believe you'll be able to see that there is a strong return for your annual transient occupancy tax contribution. So, looking at Montgomery County specifically, as you probably know, there are three contributions that go into supporting our program. That is a percentage of the occupancy tax from Montgomery County, along with both towns. So, the estimate that I'm working with for FY 2019, this present budget, is $9,500 from the county. But it will grow for the next fiscal year. As you can see, I took a fresh picture this morning of our new hotel, Tyler Avenue. So, the county will have two hotels, once the, this newest hotel is skinned there, and it's coming along pretty nicely.
Did you tell the Comfort Inn you were making a picture of their competition across the street?
I went in to say hello, dropped a few things before I left, but yeah, I thought, I went around where the Motor Mile Park is at first, and it wasn't as good a perspective. But yeah, so, I wanted to also point out that in addition to the $9,500 contribution from the top, the county is also really good to us in providing a space, office space, storage space, and department assistance from a couple we have here tonight, through the Public Information Office, our Planning Department, IT support. So, the county, that $9,500 is a big plus behind that. Before I get into some of our specific information here in Montgomery County, I thought that you may appreciate just a brief video that was produced by Virginia Tourism Corporation. It shows their numbers overall for the state for 2017. And I hope that you can see yourself in this, because Montgomery County is very much a part. So, while that video was very much inspirational, we do have a lot of those things here in Montgomery County. And so, I'd like to look at our numbers specifically as it, as they pertain to travelers' spending throughout the county. And so, you are probably familiar with that annual report that we get from Virginia Tourism Corporation. As you'll see, the travelers' spending continues to increase. Some years, it's a little larger increase than other years, as you can see between 2015, 2016, as compared to 2016 and '17. But throughout the years, the local tax receipts stay pretty steady. And then, I thought, we don't get a piece of the meals tax, but I thought that it's interesting to look at, because that is one of our metrics. Travelers don't only stay in the hotel rooms, they've got to eat while they're here, right? Or, and spend money on several different things. So, those metrics are all included in the economic impact report. But as you can see, Montgomery County, the figure's there, and then for Blacksburg and Christiansburg. You'll see Christiansburg, it just goes through June right now, but those numbers will be updated pretty soon. So, these occupancy numbers, that's what we look at, the occupancy revenue, for the purposes of program funding. And then, in our lodging, I thought it's pretty interesting, we subscribe to a monthly report produced by the Smith Travel Research Company. And you can see from the data that there's ups and downs. And one I'd like to point out here is, the September dive, it was across the state without fail, pretty much, that we decreased in September. And some of the assumptions were, you know, weather, if you remember. But we rebounded pretty nicely in October. But something I'd like to point out with this frame is, this is a historical report, it's backwards facing, but it also informs us as to predictions, estimations on how we're going to do going forward. It gives us historical trends, looking at local market dynamics and future supply, they all factor into, you know, how occupancy is going to look going forward. So, out of the measures there, and there's many more I could share with you, but they are detailed in some of those reports. I'd like to move on to the people part of this. And, you know, without the people, we wouldn't have a program. So, we need to understand those folks. They're our customers. Where do they come from? What do they like to do while they're here? Many different things we look at. So, we contract with Virginia Tech to do an annual visitor profile study for us. The first year was in 2016, and we wanted to look then, we had a brand-new website, we had some things out there, our brand, and so, we wanted to see kind of how that was resonating with our consumer. So, we took a focus on that the first year. And then, the next year, we wanted to look at alumni. And we all talk about, you know, the resource in the alumni, whether it's in those Go Virginia initiatives, or whether it's in, you know, folks coming back to visit, or maybe even having a second home, visits turn into retirement homes in some, in some cases. So, we wanted to take a focus on those folks. And now, currently, the active survey that we have out, we're looking at groups, whether they be sports groups, or meeting groups, or different types, motor coach groups, you know, who are those folks out there? It's not really what is, but what could be. And then, going forward, we look at other topics, such as economic impact will always be a part of that, but maybe focusing in different areas. And then, out of that same report, we found some opportunities. And you'll see that there's one that scores a little bit lower than the others, and that is in the child or children, that's young families. So, I don't look at that so much as a problem, as an opportunity. We have an opportunity to do things, whether it be in product development, or market a little differently, package a little differently. So, this report not only tells us some good things, but it tells us there's some areas that we have opportunities in. This particular one, we asked our respondents, what are the five important things to you in Montgomery County, and how do you rate them? And so, the good news is, out of the five that are most important, and this is not comprehensive, there were 30 or so elements, but out of the top five, they're all ranked high in satisfaction. So, that's really good news. And then, we asked if Montgomery County were a person, and we asked this to the general visitor, if Montgomery County were a person, what would, what words would you use to describe Montgomery County? And these are some of the words that came, and no surprises here. Again, we wanted to kind of focus in on the alumni, so theirs is a little bit different here in how they describe Montgomery County. And you may see that, like, better restaurant kind of stands out, and you may think, well, that conflicts with Slide Number Nine. But not really, because when you think about consumers, we're all consumers, what have you done for me lately? So, it's not that we don't have really great restaurants, it's maybe we need to, you know, offer different experiences, or, you know, whatever it may be. And then, lastly, out of this report, I want to say, you know, we can look at things that we can do better, but overall, we're doing pretty good. If you see extremely likely, somewhat likely to recommend, we're in the majority there. And for a destination, that's pretty darn good. So, moving into, just highlighting a couple of the marketing initiatives we've had throughout this year, you may be familiar with Eric the Travel Guide. Thank you to those who attended our viewing party in April. I did want to update you on that. Not only is the 30-minute travel series, Season One, we're in Season One, going to be continued on PBS, but also the At Create Network, if you've seen that on the public broadcasting system, it's a new kind of network in that same environment. They have added Seasons One and Seasons Two on that particular network. So, overall, we estimate a 3.6 million viewership for that series. It gets played a lot, so every time it gets played, that counts. And then, another one is the Come Find Home marketing campaign. That is done through IMG, and it started with football season, and will run through basketball season. If you've seen the Hokies All-Access Program, that is broadcast before game day, you'll see Blacksburg, Christiansburg, Montgomery County has sponsored the Tech Tunnel Tour feature entitlement there. So, and then, we also have an opportunity to show our upcoming events and activities on each of the episodes. And if you'd like to come out for any of those scheduled recordings, we'd love to have you out and see how it goes. It's pretty fun. And then, to help out, you know, our colleagues throughout the county, and to be a mutual benefit to us as well, we get plugged into several things that the county's working on, like the Rome NRV bike sharing program, but also with the businesses throughout Montgomery County, we try to give an opportunity to network with each other, to keep them updated on what's going on. And then, the regional, the regional relationship that we have there through the Crooked Road, we've been able to carry the Montgomery County brand out pretty far, and while still retaining great activity here through the Junior Appalachian Program that we started in Christiansburg, and we'll start a second program in the Price of Sport Elementary School in Blacksburg Fall of 2019. So, we get plugged into the community wherever we can, and makes sense for our program. Regionally, throughout the New River Valley, we work to build capacity, so we work with our colleagues, and throughout the New River Valley, on trying to package products for our travelers, and make it really easy for them to get around while they're here. And most recently, we developed itinerary based on the Mary Draper Ingalls story. I took it down to Greenville, South Carolina, and sold it to a lot of motor coach and tour operators there, who, by the way, they all were very familiar with our area, exit 118 specifically for a stop, but I was able to talk with them about all the additional great things that we have here. And then, lastly, I just wanted to say that we take very seriously what we do in tourism. We know that Montgomery County needs to be at least at the state level when these conversations are going on. So, I wanted to let you know that Irene Kilmer, many of you know Irene, she was, she was one of two finalists for the State DMO Employee of the Year. I was really proud of her, and she went up against a tourism director with many years of longevity. So, proud of her for that. And then, I spoke, was a noted speaker to a couple of panel breakouts for the State Tourism Conference. So, always happy to carry Montgomery County forward and let people know why they should visit. And so, that's our update for tonight. If you have any questions, either now or later, I'd love to entertain them.
Supervisor Fidzikowski.
I don't have any questions, but I really appreciate what you're doing for our county by selling it and by keeping up with the statistics so that we know where we stand. I think it's wonderful. Thank you.
Supervisor DeMonte.
When I was campaigning for this office, you and I had a long phone call about tourism functions, and I finished that phone call very impressed with you and how much your office accomplishes. And that was a few years ago. And so, now, as I'm serving on the Montgomery MTDC Tourism Development Committee, I consistently become more and more and more impressed with how much you and Irene accomplish, and really how limited the funding is for you guys to accomplish those things. So, thank you very much for the update. You do an amazing job. Irene does an amazing job. We're very fortunate to have you working on tourism for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs.
I just, but I agree totally with what Supervisor DeMonte said, and you know that. And I still get comments from the tour that you gave the VACO people from all over the state, and how lucky we are to have a tourism office, and we're very lucky to have Irene, too. And we're also lucky that you all provide public relations for all the wondering citizens that come in and don't know where to go, and come to your office. And I've been there many a time, and you're just welcoming, and it's not really your job, but you're showing them where to go. So, thank you for everything.
Supervisor Butler.
So, on one of your slides, it showed that Blacksburg has over $1 million in tax revenue, if I'm reading, was reading it correctly, and Christiansburg was about $750,000, and the county was $35,000. So, you don't get all of that? You get half of that, or?
.8, .85 of 1%. So, there was additional revenues in there before the program was established. There was additional revenues that by County Administrator Meadows can maybe 2006-ish, it was before the program, I think there was some additional...
Yeah, with some carryover from Chamber Days, back when the Chamber ran it.
Right. So, to make a long story short, .85 of 1% goes in to fund our program.
And that's, what is that tax rate that generates that? Is that 5%? Is that...
Okay. So, I've shown the tax rate on Blacksburg and Christiansburg.
Okay. Seven and six.
Yes. And the county is different.
So...
The meals tax in Montgomery County is 4%. Do you remember what the occupancy tax is, Carol?
I have it here.
That's okay. So, basically, the county is 2% of the whole picture? Is that about right?
I have not run the numbers, but...
We're not, we're not a lot. That is correct.
The 35, 34,000, 35,000 compared to $1,750,000, is, are those the numbers that I would be looking at?
Yes.
Yes.
Oh, 3% of just occupancy tax for the county is 3.
Okay.
Rate, tax rate.
Are you pleased with all of this? You're pleased with the progress?
I'm pleased with the progress in that we've grown it in the six years that this program has been established each year. We went from an estimated $250,000 to support the program, to it's around 350 and upwards to when the true up is done. So, we've, we've been able to raise that.
Do you see a plateau out there at any point in the near...
We'll reach a point of capacity, in both terms of people, you know, resources in general, yes.
And then, lastly, do you ever do an internal survey of all your customers, meaning all the hoteliers, and, oh, how's our, is our tourism office doing what you would expect them to do?
Informally, not formally, but that would be a great thing, I think we could add on to our annual research done by Virginia Tech.
That's all I have. Thank you for everything that you do. You're doing a great job.
Supervisor Shepard.
No questions. Thank you for the presentation. Lot of, lot of information.
Great. Thank you. And thank you again for your support. This is a wonderful program.
Supervisor Kane.
You forgot me because I'm poor, didn't you?
I just got it.
I have no questions. Thank you, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate you being here this evening. The next item on our agenda, and I'm going to make sure, is the Appalachian Community Good evening.
Evening. My name is Justin Martin, and on behalf of my classmates and my professors over here, I'd like to thank you all for giving us the time to present our findings. Once again, thank you for spending time for us with Virginia Tech and allowing us to present. My name is Sean Kim, and I will be presenting a brief history of the Radford Arsenal and its community in order to provide some context for the research conducted by Virginia Tech as part of the Appalachian Teaching Project. The Radford Ammunition Armored Plant, also commonly known as the Arsenal, has been a keystone in the New River Valley of Virginia since 1941, when it was built to meet the man for ammunition during World War II. At peak production, the Arsenal employed 23,000 people. Today, the Arsenal produces 200 types of pollutants, all with nitrocellulose as ingredient. The Arsenal is a major employer in New River Valley with 2,500 employees. The Radford facility includes 1,200 active buildings on over 4,000 acres. As you can see on this map, the Arsenal is situated in a horseshoe curve of the New River in both Polaski and Montgomery Counties. Recent decades have witnessed some friction between the Arsenal and local community. News reports state that the Arsenal has been a state's largest polluter since 2004 and described thyroid cancer as a community concern. Citizens and students founded watchdog, watchdog groups such as Hold Radford Arsenal Accountable to request greater transparency regarding pollutants. Such concerns led to the first quarterly meeting with the Arsenal Commander Lieutenant Colonel Alicia Mossan in 2015. Past committee meetings have often been contentious, filled with community accusations and worries. In a September meeting, however, we observed that that incident seemed tense and residents seemed to cooperate, cooperate to achieve a common goal. My name once again is Justin, and I'm going to give you an overview of our study and what we will cover in today's presentation. Open burns ill winds. In 2017, community concerns came to a head with the publication of an article called "Open Burns Ill Winds" by ProPublica, a Pulitzer Prize-winning investigative news source. Stated concerns included environmental hazards, particularly the Arsenal's open burning of a substantial percentage of its solid waste, and potential health effects, especially cancer. In 2017, the nearby town of Blacksburg passed a resolution urging the Radford Army Ammunition Plant to reduce the quantity of pollutants it releases into the air and into the New River to share environmental data with the community and to reduce open burning. Community responses to the ProPublica article, including the Blacksburg Resolution, prompted Virginia Tech researchers to propose this Appalachian Teaching Project. The Boards of Supervisors in Montgomery County and Pulaski County agreed to serve as community partners, and current Arsenal Commander Lieutenant Colonel James Scott welcomed the proposed study. Purpose of our study is to get a general sense of whether people are concerned about the Arsenal or anything related to that, and if they have concerns, what those concerns might be. We're going to go over environmental justice, brief history, reviews on literature that we did related to water, air, and soil, surveys that we did, interviews that we conducted with some of the surveyed members, emissions data, recent efforts by the Arsenal, and pilot studies by Virginia Tech faculty, and further recommendations.
Good evening. My name is John Adorsky, and I'm going to be discussing the environmental justice considerations. Environmental justice is the equitable distribution of environmental risks and benefits regardless of race and class, fair and meaningful participation in environmental decision-making, and the capability of communities and individuals to function and flourish within this society. Environmental movements and health, social movements have increased public awareness about the limited ability of medical science to solve persistent health problems, promote democratic participation in the scientific knowing, and examine the role of science for better or for worse in struggles for our community, for environmental health and justice. One example is the recent struggle over open burning at a military ammunition depot. In the 1980s, when the Bluegrass Army Depot in central Kentucky began incinerating chemical weapons, local citizens expressed concern over the potential health effects of destroying nerve gas. According to a report at an international conference on grassroots environmental movements, a coalition of groups including concerned citizens of Madison County and Common Ground was able to reform the way in which chemical weapons were destroyed at the Bluegrass Army Depot. The coalition successfully challenged the depot's claim that the average people cannot understand the highly complex nature of disposing of chemical weapons. Working with local legislators and private engineers, they proposed a system that dramatically reduced the emissions from open burns. At the Bluegrass Army Depot, as the Bluegrass Army Depot example suggests, the scientization of community decision-making can lead to framing political and moral questions in terms of science, thereby allowing policymakers to use science or the lack of science to justify regulatory decisions. By contrast, the inclusion of community members in scientific discovery and problem-solving allows citizens to grapple with the same issues and contradictions that they previously criticized and to become productive partners in addressing inequitable situations. An environmental justice framework requires that community experiences, concerns, and the knowledge remain essential and valuable. Our research project incorporates input from elected representatives and government bodies, social scientists and humanities scholars, scientists and public health scholars, activists, and people living in defense-like communities mostly exposed to risk.
Hi, my name is Megan, and I will be discussing findings from our comprehensive literature review. In regard to water quality, our research team focused on PCBs, perchlorates, and the general impact of waste management units of the Arsenal. Polyfluorinated biphenols, or PCBs, are synthetic compounds that are water soluble and resistant to degradation, making them valuable for industrial processes but also environmental and human health hazards. PCBs enter the New River through point sources and non-point sources. The levels of PCB within the New River are so high that it has been listed as an impaired watershed since 2002. Because of the river's impaired status, DEQ requires that entities may not release more than 187,419 milligrams per year of PCBs, and yet the annual average load released is three times that much, as you can see on this graph. The Arsenal releases roughly 16 to 18 million gallons of water per day through numerous outfalls, and according to the DEQ, it is one of the permitted facilities that is targeted for reducing PCB releases. Pechlorates are inorganic compounds used in explosives that can be found in water or in solid form. They target the thyroid gland and can increase the risk of hypothyroidism. A 2015 report done by the Agency for Toxins, Substances and Disease Registry, or the ATSDR, states that chemical releases from the Arsenal are diluted by the high volume of the New River and thus are not a concern for drinking water. Furthermore, concentrations of perchlorate found in New River, found in the New River and in private drinking wells located around the Arsenal are below levels of concern, as you can see in this graph. The ATSDR report nonetheless encouraged private well owners to test their water periodically for contaminants of concern. Waste management units are also a concern of the community. Waste management units have documented impacts on groundwater and soil as shown by DEQ monitoring and corrective actions as when contaminants exceed levels of concern. Contaminants of concern identified in the Arsenal test wells in a report of 2014 include tri-choralethylene, or TCE, cobalt, barium, and perchlorate. Of these, TCE and cobalt had measured concentrations higher than levels of concern. In regard to air quality, we focused on concerns related to the practice of open burning. When propellants do not need quality control, they must be disposed of, and when they are too large to fit into waste incinerators, they are burned in the open burning ground immediately adjacent to the New River. The concerns of the air quality, the concerns of our air quality study were lead, particulate matter 2.5, and particulate matter 10, and volatile organic compounds, and carbon monoxide. In 2017, EPA and NASA used a drone to collect samples directly from open burning plumes to compare them to Arsenal's emissions modeling equations and human health risk levels. Arsenic was found to be emitted at rates 37 times higher than modeling estimates, while lead was emitted at five times higher than estimates. Copper was also found to be emitted at higher levels. Of the 26 volatile compounds, volatile organic compounds sampled, only one, chloromethane, was found to be emitted at 2.3 times higher than the human risk level. Our literature review found that the New River is impacted by many contaminants of concern. However, these impacts cannot be attributed solely to the Arsenal. The soil and groundwater of the Arsenal is impacted by waste management units as documented by data and corrective actions. For air, literature shows that Arsenal emissions modeling was inaccurate in regard to the amount of lead, arsenic, and copper that they were releasing from the open burns.
Good evening. I'm Nick Mailer, and I will be describing results from the survey about the Radford Army Ammunition Plant, which we distributed via email to Montgomery and Pulaski County employees and email distribution lists maintained by the Arsenal. We also posted invitations to participate in our survey on the Facebook pages of two Arsenal watchdog groups. 317 people responded to our survey, 47% of whom reported that either they or a household member have worked for the Arsenal, and I will be referring to that as work history with the Arsenal. The median age of respondents was 45 years, and 61% of respondents were male. 128 respondents were from Montgomery County, and 61% of respondents reported a household income over $75,000, which is much higher than the median household income for Pulaski and Montgomery Counties at $49,500 based on census data. While the survey responses cannot be considered representative of the population, the purpose of our survey was to gather data on community concerns from sources available to us. When asked to describe general feelings about the Arsenal, 66% thought that it was a positive presence in the New River Valley. When asked specifically if they had concerns about the Arsenal, out of the 304 respondents who answered, 54% replied probably or definitely not, while only 29% replied probably or definitely yes. When stratified by household work history, you can see that concerns were more prevalent for those who answered no. Participants who expressed the possibility of related concerns were then asked to name their primary concern. Of the 144 write-in responses, the most mentioned concern was pollution contamination or health of the environment at 69%. 19% cited employee safety, 15% indicated community health, 9% mentioned explosives or explosions, and 5% identified secrecy or lack of transparency. 185 participants who had expressed the possibility of concerns were then asked to select concerns that they shared from previously identified lists. Among concerns that were identified, discharges into the New River was the largest, followed by occupational hazards and open air burning. Of the participants who had a household work history with the Arsenal, occupational hazards were identified more frequently than other concerns. The final substantive question of our survey asked, what else would you like us to know about your opinions or concerns regarding environmental factors and human health? Of 317 completed surveys, only 47 include a response to this question, and of those, 21 stated concerns, while 16 made statements in defense of the Arsenal. Overall, these survey responses indicate that while some participants have concerns about the Arsenal, these concerns are varied and are not universal throughout the community. A large portion, excuse me, a large portion of participants perceived survey invitation as an opportunity to show their support for the Arsenal. For those participants who had concerns, their responses center on discharges into the New River, occupational hazards, and open air burning.
Good evening. My name is Emma, and I'll be describing the interviews we conducted. We interviewed 12 community members from the New River Valley about their experiences with the Radford Army Ammunition Plant, and all of the interviewees were elective. We contacted interviewees by attending community meetings about the Arsenal, utilizing existing community contacts of people who live near the Arsenal or have been vocal about their concerns, and by contacting survey respondents who indicated a willingness to be interviewed. The people we interviewed were from Polaski County, Montgomery County, or the city of Radford. The interviews demonstrated that there are common sentiments, both positive and negative, among community members about the Arsenal's impact on their community. The positive impacts most often, most often cited included, most often cited included the jobs the Arsenal provides for the community and the role that the Arsenal plays in national security. As one interviewee told us, "My priority has always been the security of the nation, and to me, the Radford Army Ammunition Plant is right at the top of critical assets for the Department of Defense." Some community members, however, also commented that the assumed benefits of the Arsenal may not be that beneficial at all, noting that many folks working at the Arsenal were moving from far away into the New River Valley, and that the weapons produced at the Arsenal could make the region a target in the event of an international conflict. Many of the perceived negative impacts of the Arsenal on the community echoed the community concerns brought up in the July 2017 ProPublica article, "Open Burns Ill Winds." Community members voiced concerns over how having an Army ammunition plant would impact their water, air, and soil, as well as how often, as well as how those impacts correlate with thyroid cancer and neurological development in children. Expressing concerns about air pollution from open burning, one interview, one interviewee stated, "Who knows, who knows how long these nasty plumes last or how far they go." Water pollution from the Arsenal was another concern. As another respondent described, "It's one of the biggest sources, biggest point sources for nitrates, and nitrates create algae blooms." Three of 12 interviewees stated that they had no concerns about the Arsenal. Despite the many concerns, we learned from interviewees that they feel that the Arsenal's relationship with the community has improved over time. Many residents cited more transparency in community meetings, and most recently, the leadership of Lieutenant James Scott, as reasons for this positive change. Community members were also happy to see the Arsenal conducting more testing and working with Virginia Tech on the study to provide more data, more data to the community. However, the effects of the community's perception that the Arsenal previously failed to be transparent still remain. One interviewee stated, "I like to see the changes they're making. I have just been disturbed by the lack of transparency of the scientific information. The fact that they have been there for 75 years and there's been no movement towards any type of passive air monitoring outside the facility or at the facility with data that they would be willing to share. The fact that the group over there has scientists to be able to do it and has the ability to get the technology to do it and share the results with the community, and yet none of it has been done." Next, Allison will describe the air emissions data and recent efforts.
Hello, my name is Allison. I will be discussing our documentation of air emissions and categorizing recent changes at the Arsenal that may have reduced air contaminants released. You can see the open burning grounds, the gray squares near the river, in this Google satellite image. The goal of our project was to document community concerns and investigate those concerns to the best of our ability. Radford Army Ammunition Plant, like other qualifying facilities in Virginia, self-reports certain emission outputs yearly to the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality. Using the Arsenal's DEQ numbers and data from the EPA's National Emissions Inventory, we have been able to track the output of air pollutants released by the Arsenal. We collected data over a 10-year period of time, 2007 to 2017. In May 2017, the Arsenal switched its primary energy source to natural gas and retired its coal-powered electric plant. Emissions data for the coming year will document whether particulate matter, PM2.5 and PM10 released by the Arsenal decreases as anticipated following the closure of the coal plant. the coal plant. At the March 2018 Arsenal Community Meeting, Commander Scott presented the Commander's Environmental Stewardship Challenge. The following May, RAAP reduced the lead content of open burns by 65% by sending cut propellants to the incinerator. This decreased the risk of community exposure to lead emissions. The incineration of propellants that were formerly open burned helped bring the total waste sent to the open burn site down by 50%. The open burning ground now has 95% less lead. In recent months, the arsenal submitted water and air permits, applications for their new energetic waste incinerator. The army funding is secure, and it will treat 95% of current waste, leaving only 5% of waste destined for open burns. Full operation is anticipated to happen in 2023, when the old incinerator will be retired. With equipment and sighting advice from Dr. Lindsay Marr at Virginia Tech, the arsenal purchased and installed three ambient air monitors that detect PM 2.5, lead, arsenic, and chromium. Samples from the monitors are sent for weekly testing. In January 2019, arsenal personnel will reassess how often testing should occur based on levels detected in 2018. These notable changes may have been seen, may be seen as the fruits of a strengthened relationship between the arsenal and the community. Lieutenant Colonel Alicia Masson increased the number of environmentally focused public meetings from one to five per year. When Commander James Scott assumed position in summer 2017, he told reporters that he planned to continue efforts to better community relations, increase transparency, and improve dialogue related to community concerns about environmental and health issues. In June, Commander Scott opened the arsenal's doors to community members. The arsenal's open house is an example of the arsenal seeking to gain trust and increase transparency. Now Quinn will present the results of the pilot studies conducted by Dr. Marr and Dr.
Good evening all. My name is Quinn Nguyen, and I'll be outlining the findings of two pilot studies spearheaded by VT faculty that measure amounts of selected metals, volatile organic compounds in air, soil, and blood. The first pilot study was led by Dr. Lindsay Marr of Civil and Environmental Engineering to monitor levels of six metals, arsenic, cadmium, cobalt, copper, nickel, and lead, as well as four volatile organic compounds, benzene, toluene, ethylbenzene, and xylanes in the air. Over this past summer, her team collected samples at four sites by placing air filters at four locations as shown on this map, the Arsenal Fire Station, Residential Site One, Residential Site Two, and Kentland Farms. The open burn ground is the red star on the map. Although the wind direction on the sampling days weren't consistent with the historically southwest to northeast winds, the winds are relatively calm, and the summer was fairly usual on the open burn schedule. And as you can see from these graphs, the top graphs, the observed concentrations of all six metals in the air at all four locations were well below health-based standards compared to the highest level of lead found at 0.02 micrograms per cubic meter. The level of concern and the most stringent standards set by the National Ambient Air Quality Standard is 0.15 micrograms per cubic meter, as indicated by the red lines. The bottom graphs show that the observed concentrations of all four volatile organic compounds in the air at all four locations were also well below health-based standards. None of the bars come close to the 30 micrograms per cubic meter, which is the most stringent standard set by the EPA. Overall, these results indicate that while open burning was occurring this summer, the observed concentrations of metals and volatile organic compounds at four locations, at least four locations around the outside of the arsenal, were well below the levels of health concern. And while Dr. Marr's air study might have shown low levels of metals since the arsenal had reduced their open burning, soil has the advantage of indicating accumulation of metals over time, and high levels of metal at certain depths of soil would suggest elevated exposures in the past. The second pilot study was led by neuroscience, neuroscientist Dr. Chris Thompson to measure levels of heavy metals in soil and cow blood. And as you can see from this map, soil was collected at three sites, Kentland Farm, 29 sites east of the arsenal, west of the Blacksburg, Blacksburg Christiansburg area, chosen based on their distance from the open burn grounds, and 10 sites at Steel's Tavern to serve as a positive control. And the lead levels were low at Kentland, levels of 10 to 30 milligrams per kilogram east of the arsenal. The highest levels detected were 70 and 130 milligrams per kilogram from samples very near the open burn grounds, but 400 is the most stringent level of concern in the U.S., and 200 milligrams per kilograms is the level of concern set in the UK for sites of gardens. The second part of Dr. Thompson's study measured the levels of arsenic, cadmium, copper, and lead in cow blood, which serves as an indicator of the, oh, these graphs are the arsenic, and next, cadmium, and this is just in soil. But the second part of Dr. Thompson's study measured the levels of arsenic, cadmium, copper, and lead in cow blood, which serves as an indicator of the amount of metal in the blood of a child living in the area. Theoretically, the higher the level of the metal in the soil, the higher the level of the metal in the blood. When the cow blood was tested for lead, only two of the, two of the 15 samples from nearby Kentland Farms had any detectable lead levels at 2 micrograms per deciliter, which is 2.5 times lower than the blood lead level concern for children. And arsenic and cadmium wasn't detected, and copper levels didn't differ between Kentland Farms and the control site. Next, Tanisha will detail conclusions as well as steps and courses of action that we and community members recommend moving forward.
Hello, I'm Tanisha Griffin, and I'll be discussing our study's recommendations. Through our collection of narratives and concerns from local community members in Pulaski and Montgomery County, we have been able to understand what community concerns exist, why have these concerns, and outline some general recommendations. During interviews, interviewees were given the opportunity to provide recommendations for the arsenal. The recommendations collected centered around themes of environmental protection, safeguarding public health, and providing more data on pollution and general scientific transparency. More specifically, interviewee recommendations included more air and water monitoring that is continuous and correlating data made publicly accessible, pollutant monitoring at Bellevue Elementary School, monitoring of lead and nitrate with use of bioindicators such as the cows tested for lead in Dr. Thompson's research, and more monitoring of contaminants such as particulate matter, dioxins, and furans. Unlike our community interviews, our survey did not have a question inquiring about recommendations for the arsenal. Her, as you can see on this previous slide, the proportions of respondents concerned with discharges to the New River, noise, open burning ground, occupational hazards for workers at the arsenal are important, and should inform the arsenal's continued efforts to reduce air emissions, prevent discharges to groundwater, and manage discharges into the New River. Lastly, after conducting our end of literature review on drinking water, groundwater, soil health, and air quality, we have some additional recommendations. This is a CDC map of incidence rates of thyroid cancer in Virginia from 2011 to 2015. I apologize that Montgomery County's thyroid cancer rates aren't put up there, but they are 7.7, which is below the U.S. rate of 14.5 and below the Virginia rate of 13.1. Pulaski County's thyroid cancer rate is 14.2, below the United States rate of 14.5, and above the Virginia rate of 13.1. The CDC Cancer Registry does not show thyroid cancer closures in Pulaski or Montgomery County. There are limitations to the data, limitation to the data on thyroid cancer because it is at the county level, and thyroid cancer is relatively, relatively rare to begin with. Conducting future studies that look at thyroid cancer levels and impacted regions of Pulaski and Montgomery County to see if the incidence there is any higher than the rest of the county is recommended. After our review of the 2015 ATSDR Drinking Water Health Consultation Report, we recommend more primary data on the impact of released chemicals on local drinking water sources. Furthermore, the alcohols assessed by the ATSDR are not used for drinking water, so further research is needed to determine if such large releases of contaminants into the New River are of health concern to drinking water specifically. Also, the ATSDR report conclusions on groundwater health use well data from a 1992 Arsenal and EPA report and from a 2013 Sierra Club report, so we recommend the collection of more updated information on private wells in the surrounding communities. And in 2018 PCB total maximum daily load report produced by the Department of Biological Systems Engineering at Virginia Tech, the actual PCB concentrations released from the arsenal to the water were listed as varies. Further research or data is needed to determine how much PCBs arsenal is releasing into the New River. Lastly, according to the EPA's groundwater monitoring program for hazardous waste treatment, storage, and disposal facilities, monitoring is to be done semi-annually at minimum, so we recommend more annual groundwater reports to be made publicly accessible on the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, RAAP, reports and documents website for the surrounding communities to view. Those are all of our recommendations. We thank you for your time this evening, and if there are any other questions that we don't have time to answer, we do have an online survey.
Thank you all very much. I know we've got some supervisors who may have some questions, and I'll start off with Vice Chair Demonts.
Thank you all so much for coming this evening. I actually was one of the attendees at Lieutenant Colonel Masson's community meetings that she had, I think, starting in 2015, and I have also attended Lieutenant Colonel Scott's community meetings as well, when my schedule allows, so I haven't been at every one. I have been impressed over the course of attending those meetings. One, with the tone of the meeting and the change of the tone in the years since they began, it is significantly more friendly than it once was, and then also with the arsenal's willingness to look into and adopt some practices for the community as requested by the community. So I think the information that all of you have provided tonight provides a good summation of that, of what I personally have experienced in my personal, I guess, investigation of the Radford Army Ammunition Plant, and you guys just kind of solidified some of what I was thinking. I really like the recommendations that you have suggested at the end of your presentation. I think that they're solid and definitely something that the arsenal can benefit from hearing and possibly implementing. So thank you all very much for your time. Wonderful presentation, really appreciate the work that you've done on this.
Supervisor Biggs.
I really appreciate the presentation, and you all did a marvelous job. Yay, yay, students, great job. Can we get a copy of this report? And I'm with Supervisor Demonts about the recommendations. I don't know what we as a board can do to encourage some of those things to happen, but I would like to look at it, and thank you so much for your work.
Supervisor Bowden.
Early in the presentation, I think I heard that the arsenal was not measuring things correctly. Is that correct? And some of, some of...
I can somewhat answer to this question. So it is my understanding that the arsenal uses equations to calculate amounts of emissions that are going to be emitted after open burning, and a 2017 drone study done by the EPA and NASA found that the emissions directly from the plumes did not match the calculations that the equations were found, so.
So you all brought up a lot of great information. I'm assuming that the public doesn't know this kind of data until now. Is that possibly true?
It's possible that they know several aspects of our data. We are, part of our purpose was to sift through and compile and sort of recontextualize to make clear all of this data that we had been researching.
So do you think that your report's going to be a game changer? Because now everybody's going to be working off the same data versus, I think that that burn, you know, is probably emitting off all this bad stuff, you know? Or it's great to have the data, right? Do you think it's going to change behavior?
Luckily, we've already seen a trend at the Radford Army Ammunition Plant towards more transparency in recent years, and they've also made efforts to reduce their open burning and other things, so hopefully our findings support those efforts in the future. But the main purpose of our study, I would say, would be to gauge how the community feels about it, and we have gotten a little bit of a snapshot into who's concerned and what they're concerned about.
So the only way that we will know if your report has made a change from the community's perspective is to take another set of surveys some point in the future? Is that fair to say?
Who wouldn't love that?
Mm-hmm. So the recommendations are several. Who is supposed to implement them?
So for some of the recommendations, I think, for some of the recommendations, I think specifically, I'm thinking about the arsenal, but they're really in a relationship with the Virginia Department of Environmental Quality, and they work together very, like, they work together a lot. So I'm thinking that with a lot of the recommendations, it would be a lot of them working together through their relationships, because a lot of things that I'm talking about are in regards to research that may already be being done, but the transparency isn't there. I think a lot of my recommendations are centered around that transparency. So I think, like, for instance, with the reports being available, there are annual groundwater reports that have to be done semi-annually. They're just not in a particular place on the website where anyone in the public can easily find it, and us having a semester to do so and just kind of getting, just touching the surface on what's really there kind of shows that. So I'm thinking more so with the arsenal itself and the Department of Environmental Quality, those are the main key players, but also from the community as well, trying to get more involved in that relationship.
I was thinking a lot about the well measurements. That's not going to be DEQ or the arsenal.
It's probably, well, if the community members do their own, it would be extension, so they could work with extension to get that done. So that's another option, and I think the Sierra Club was the organization that did the previous one in 2013, so I don't know if they continue to do it, but we didn't find any other reports from the Sierra Club, so that may be another option.
Okay. And, great job. Good luck with finals.
Thank you.
Supervisor Sheffler.
I don't have any questions. Thank you for the presentation.
Supervisor King.
No questions.
Supervisor Fidjikowski.
Did I understand that prior to your investigation that the arsenal did not have any permanent air monitoring sites, but now they have purchased three of those, and they'll be testing them on a, I guess, a regular basis?
As far as we know.
But they are permanent monitoring sites now that they have?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
That one's the toughest question that we got.
Well, wait a minute, I still have, I get to ask. So I think I have a few questions, especially about the science process of it. And from what I read that was up there on the board, and one, I greatly appreciate the time and efforts that you guys put into it, but science in my mind is wonderful because it's not about feelings, it's about facts. And if I'm seeing the facts that are up there, we are not seeing arsenic in our area, we're not seeing lead poisoning in our area based on the soil samples going out from the arsenal, even across, and I think that's a very important message to get out in the community because we're worried about what's being discharged, but those things are not found in our soil, and that's something very important to a lot of folks who are in some of the poorest areas of our county. And that's exciting for me to hear. When you gave the statistics about thyroid cancer, you may not, you weren't here, but there was another speaker from a different group who talked about that our thyroid cancer was off the charts compared to nationally, but yet, from what I heard, that isn't accurate. And I appreciate your efforts, being a neutral third party, providing this information. You don't have a dog in the fight, you just want to get to the facts. And so as a resident of Montgomery County, I'm very thankful for that work and appreciative that we're going to be able to look at our citizens and saying, "We need to monitor this, we have this situation, but you're not being poisoned by your government." And I think that's a really important thing for citizens to know, and thank you very much, especially the citizens I represent in District B.
Thank you. Once again, if you have any questions you want a more extensive answer to, something that you didn't think of, please send them to our tiny URL right here, and we'll work on getting those answered. on getting those answered for you. Thank you again.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Do you want to take... Folks, do you want to take five-minute breaks?
Yeah.
All right. I tell you what, it's about 9:10. By that clock, let's start back at... I'll tell you what, Todd, I'll make it a 10-minute break. So we'll get back, start at 9:20.
Carol back in her seat. She's already given me the very...
All right. Next item on our agenda, I'll make sure, is public hearings. Specifically, the following public hearing was advertised pursuant to law in the New River Valley section of the RONIC Times on November the 2nd and on November the 9th, 2018. I almost said 19. Notice of intent to abandon specifically a portion of Barn Road SR 627. Intent to abandon a portion of State Route 627, Barn Road, from .18 mile east of Route 660 Tyler Road to the intersection with Route 658 Meadow Creek, for a total of .22 mile in the Reiner Magistral District of Montgomery County. I don't believe that anyone is specifically signed up, but we have Emily here to give us a description.
I just have a couple of brief slides to go over in detail what you published in your notice of intent to abandon. The graphic that we put online is also in the presentation. But just for a little bit of perspective, this is the project area. You can see here, this is our exit 109 portion of the county. Along the top here is 81. And this is Tyler Avenue going down here towards the hospital. Barn Road is this road shown right along here, and then Meadow Creek goes around. As part of the Meadow Creek realignment project, the Barn Road abandonment is a portion of that. And I will show you, this is the graphic that we made available online with your notice of intent. The .22 goes from this portion right before this first curve, all the way out here to Meadow Creek. Meadow Creek Road itself, you can see, has this kind of a 90-degree angle here, and it, as part of the realignment project, will be a softer curve here and then tie into the existing roadway. This area here will be abandoned and be made available part of this property. Barn Road, you can see here, is on the south, and it comes along this way. And I have a close-up. That bend where the abandonment starts is approximately this area. A cul-de-sac will be added there. And then the portion from that cul-de-sac out to Meadow Creek. So this portion here is what you're considering for abandonment. As we typically do with an abandonment, if it does move forward, what happens is usually you take the 50 feet of right-of-way and 25 feet goes to an adjacent property owner, and 25 feet goes to the other adjacent property owner. In this particular case, since this is an improved right-of-way, neither property owner's very much interested in half of the road. So the neighbor here to the south is Corollian, and they actually, they're very supportive of this project. I had a meeting with them just a week or so ago to go over all of this, to make sure that I didn't misspeak on their behalf. But they actually will be giving up their interest in the 25 feet. And wholly, this 50 feet will go to Mr. Young, who's the property owner here. That way, all these parcels, which are all his property, will all have that access along that right-of-way. So all the parcels will maintain access, and there'll be several items that go into place, the right-of-way, the quitclaim, and then ultimately his maintenance agreement to take over the maintenance of that portion. In addition, Corollian will be giving an additional area here to form the cul-de-sac, and Roger Woody will give the portion on this side. He's the adjacent property owner there. This is just kind of an aerial to show a little bit better Mr. Young's parcels, Corollian's parcels, and then these over here are part of the Roger Woody project. And you can see here, this is where the realignment will go. That's all the information that I have available for you. It's pretty straightforward, but I can tell you that all of the property owners have been contacted and consulted. I'll feel this is the best approach.
And in regards to... Is there any... Anyone have any questions to stand? Okay. Emily, thank you very much. There was no one signed up for the public hearing, but that does not mean that if there's a member of the public that would like to speak to the board, please come forward, and you will have five minutes. We need you to state your name and address. And this is not the opportunity for the board to respond, but rather the opportunity for the board to listen. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on this issue? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing on that matter. And next item on our agenda is public address. There was one individual signed up, but that name has been marked through. But this is the opportunity for the public to address us on any matter. You can come forward, state your name and address, and you'll have five minutes. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board on any topic? Seeing no one coming forward, I'll go ahead and close public address. At this point in time, I don't believe that there's an addendum. Is there a motion in regards to the items of consent?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Biggs and a second by Supervisor Shepherd. Madam Clerk, would you please... Is there any discussion?
I'd like to pull the Cloverly out to our next meeting. I have some questions I'd like to get answered before we vote on that one.
Okay.
I'll see.
And that would be Item C, final platform Cloverly Phase 2A.
Is that acceptable?
There's a motion and a second. Does anyone... Will that be accepted as a friendly amendment?
I can accept it, yeah.
So a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
So we're just going to pull that out and then have it on our December 10th agenda?
Okay. It's fine with me.
That being said, there's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the world?
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Next item, is there a motion to go into work session?
So moved.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the world?
Just a second. Mr. King?
Aye.
Fidjikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demonts?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Bowden?
Aye.
Mr. Shepherd?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven Eyes.
Hello again.
Thank you, Chair Tuck. Our first item on the work session is entitled, "Proposed Boundary Line Adjustments for the Town of Christiansburg." There are several properties currently in the unincorporated portion of Montgomery County that have been requested by their owners to be taken into the Town of Christiansburg's boundaries. The town has provided us parcel information for these properties, and the town council has also been made aware of these requests. Emily has a map before you, and she's going to briefly review the parcels with you this evening. And then we'll see if there's any questions. What we're seeking this evening is approval to move forward with a public hearing, considering boundary line adjustments for these properties in the future. So Emily, I'll recognize you.
These maps were provided in your board packet for this evening. This is the overview map that shows the five main areas being considered. And as Craig mentioned, these were all brought forward by the property owners to the town council, Town of Christiansburg, and so they're already aware of these properties. The first, you will look somewhat familiar. This is the area that we actually just looked at last year. This is known as the Meadows Golf Course, and it does have three adjacent properties that were not originally part of the golf course that are being considered as well. They call this the Meadows Golf Course and Shepherd Properties. This portion is right here, the corporate limits, and this is also the railroad. The next group of parcels are located just off of the exit 114 at Route 80, at Interstate 81. This portion here on the side of Route 80 is the current, known by many names, Forest Bar Gospel, Grace Bible Church, that area. This is their campus now, and they've also acquired all of these parcels on the other side of Route 8. And they have put in a request with the town. This portion here will probably look familiar to you all because of the work we've been doing with the Economic Development Authority and this property. It was rezoned here in the county last year to make sure everything was all set. And then part of that agreement that you guys are very familiar with was that this portion would potentially go into the town, be served by their infrastructure. This little sliver here is actually in the county, but is currently part of right-of-way. It was the former parking ride, and that is an area that is being looked at to go into the town also. And then the last piece is this little sliver here, which is part of what's now known as Reagan's Point subdivision. The subdivision was recently approved by the Town of Christiansburg. And this is on, I think, four lots have some portion of this that straddles the line, and this would just be to clean that up. And that's all of the parcels.
Supervisor Biggs, do you have any questions?
There really weren't specific reasons for them asking to be put in. It was just they wanted to just be part of the town. I mean, what was the...
We weren't made of any, aware of any specific reasons. Generally, when adjoining properties want to be brought into the town limits, it's to have access to public utilities.
Utilities, yeah.
Water and sewer. That's, that would be my presumption for nearly all of these requests.
I was just thinking about the parking ride. I wonder what was going to happen there.
Supervisor Bowden?
I apologize. I didn't, I don't know where the last slide, that little, the Reagan's Point subdivision, I don't know where that is on that map.
Okay, so it's right here. It's this little teeny sliver. This is the Fallen Branch interchange here. So that's the old parking ride there. And then this is just, this is an older neighborhood, and they just recently approved that Reagan's Point.
And I believe that one is primarily just to clean up a boundary line.
It is.
Yeah, that was just a small sliver.
Yeah. Okay, that's all I have.
Yeah, that one's actually less than an acre.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Supervisor Shepherd?
Speaking of cleaning up boundary lines, the one at Fallen Branch Parking Ride, you're going to end up with a, just a little peek. Is that just Highway Department property? Is that B dot? Could that not be straightened out?
I think that's the one that the state police hope to build a future permanent area office at.
That's correct.
On the property we're talking about?
Yeah, where the parking ride was.
The former parking ride lot. That's correct. And I believe that they've thought that they could move that along more expeditiously if it was in the town on that.
Wouldn't it make more sense to move that whole line, just like, kind of with the road?
I see what you're saying.
To get to that point, I mean...
Yeah.
Which road?
The main road, the 460, the end of it, where the Cloverlys are.
So all of this is in, all of this is right-of-way? Everything that's not...
Right, but you're showing the town property boundary over that.
Oh, you're saying correspond the corporate limits with right-of-way?
Yeah. Well, the road itself even. I mean, or the right-of-way, yeah.
It'd be similar to what we did on Centabar.
If you look at it. That's a good point.
It seems like if you're going to do that, you just want to go ahead and clean that old corner up.
Yeah.
That's a good suggestion. Thank you.
Sure.
Supervisor King?
Just a couple of questions. Oh, two, on number two. Where the college has all that property right there, and you got that gentleman lives right there in that little white section?
Right here?
Yeah. Has anybody reached out to him and seen if he wants to be part of town?
I'm not aware whether they did or not.
Not aware of it. This is all the property that's owned by the church group, and they're the ones that went to the town, but I don't know if anybody's contacted that one property owner.
We could, we could do that before we move forward with hearing. We did reach out to the property owner here at the end of Lovna, because you can see the corporate limits. Going to go through those parcels there, and they actually indicated they're interested in being wholly in the county. So we will, we'll try to have that ready prior to the hearing for that.
Well, nice. Maybe if I could swing by there and talk to that gentleman, and we could do it all at one time. But he'd have to ask the town first. Or would you rather reach out to him?
Makes no difference to me.
Well, it's fine.
Yeah.
I mean, and then on number five. That little section there.
I don't under... The property owner that owns the parcel that's primarily in the town just wants that, his property in the entirety to be included in the town.
So he owns all of it?
He does.
Oh, okay.
Yes, sir. He owns on both sides of the town-county line. He just wants to bring that in to the town.
This portion represents about, is less than an acre, but it's, now that it's been subdivided, it's on approximately five lots. So when we do permitting and things like that, the building officials have to determine who has jurisdiction, depending on how much it's in which one. And so we've been treating this one as if it was wholly in the town for permitting process.
Aye.
Thank you.
Supervisor Fidjikowski?
Nope.
No?
Nope.
Questions? Mike, Mike, Chair Demonts.
What, do you know the total acreage of all five parcels by any chance?
Not off the top of my head.
Okay. That's it? That's all I have?
We can get that.
It's trivia, yes. Now, I was just wondering if you had any questions?
And I'm trying to think in my mind, except for maybe the, what's going to be the state police. The others are the industrial park, or Commerce Park. There's nothing that you would be looking at restaurants, hotels on, and these.
That parcel that Emily just brought up has potential for redevelopment. But the church owns it. That's correct. It would have to go through a rezoning through the town to allow for any of that type of development.
And it would have to go through rezoning with us for any type of development.
And it's not currently zoned that way?
Right.
Okay. I was just trying to think in my mind, would there be any lost revenue in anywhere in the future, near future? And I, thank you very much.
Before we go forward, just to go over the process, what we...
Thank you.
Okay. The public hearing isn't really, I mean, it's a nice process, but the big issue that needs to be decided now is who's going to pay for the survey. We need the meets and bounds survey that has to be done prior to an agreement being drafted. Once the agreement's drafted, the main thing in agreement is just the descriptions of the property. And so then the public hearing is about the intent and range of that agreement. So the survey works to need to be done. I mean, generally, the party's split, sometimes the whole party pays it all. The party's beating us with the town. So I don't, that's maybe a conversation that administrator can have with...
We do have liaison breakfast on Wednesday. And we can bring that up and just say, you know, try to... I definitely feel that we should, since we're partners on the Commerce Park, that should be something that we should be paying for jointly, because we're jointly invested in that.
And also, the return, the cost, the return for us in the town. They're paying utility.
Utilities.
Right. So, but the other portions are different in nature, a little bit. Does the board have any direction that they would like to give me and Supervisor Demonts for liaison, or Vice Chair Demonts, excuse me, as to how to go about it?
Are you talking about we just had to pay for our part?
Meets and bounds.
The meets and bounds. Do we split the costs with the town?
Not on all of this.
Well, that's why I was saying, all right, I guess splitting the cost on the Commerce Park, but what should we do about the other meets and bounds?
Whoever asked to be moved over, they need to pay for that.
Have we had a policy before? I'm just curious.
In my nine years here, this is the first time we've had this many requests, so...
I know.
They just saved them all up.
Well, and traditionally, I'm afraid to say it, traditionally, if it's an opportunity for a parcel to go into the town, the town will gain...
Revenue.
Revenue from that. So if the request has come to the town... Revenue from that, so if the request has come to the town, then we would ask the town to pay for it. I think sharing, especially on the Falling Branch Park, is good cooperation. You know, the park, the former park and ride lot, maybe, but I'm, I'll let you guys direct that one.
I'm looking for guidance from y'all, because I'm getting ready to go to a meeting, and I'm looking to have some ideas about what this board's feeling is.
With the Commerce Park, I don't mind us paying that, because that benefits the taxpayers. But as far as the park and ride and all these others, they asked for it, so I think they need to pay it.
But the park and ride is for the state police, so, I mean, we're all gonna...
Is that so they can look up your water and sewer?
Owner would be VDOT right now.
Yeah, right.
That would remain VDOT until they did something, which, knowing the funding that the state gives to the state police, it might be a few years, so...
It might be something you just want to entertain a conversation and come back to the board.
And maybe I'll just ask them and tell them that we're definitely on board on the Commerce, but we'd like to talk a little about the other.
I'm thinking that the revenue generated on that little tiny piece of Reagan, I mean, they're not getting, no one's getting any substantial taxes to pay for any, you know, survey, so, I don't know, maybe that's a toss-up too, I don't know.
Parcels one and two are the most questionable for me. Three, I think it's an obvious share. Four and five, I don't know, does size of the property matter?
That's cost of the survey is going to be higher.
Yeah, and I'm looking at one and two as not benefiting us if we lose them as county. I mean, it would benefit the landowners considerably to have access to public utilities in the town of Christiansburg to have that revenue.
It would benefit us, though, if the property goes up, then we're going to get taxes from it at a great, but we're not going to get meals taxes, or we're not going to get hotel...
And I had, yeah, thought about that, from that angle, and you're right on that. I agree.
I don't know, it makes sense to me that the property owner and the town split those two. I mean, it's just, I mean, if they do something to develop it, we're going to gain on that anyway, whether it goes to the town or not.
Do you have your guidance?
No. So, I'll do my best to fill out with the town, and I'll try to report back in the December meeting as to kind of where we're at.
Well, property two, nobody gets tax revenue anyway, right?
Right, because it's owned by a church.
Party, how far advanced do they need to...
VDOT property, no taxes.
I'm sorry. How far advanced do they need to schedule a public hearing?
Except for maybe we get in the state police court, sir, that would benefit us per se.
State's got all the...
I know, but that might be a good one to split, like the corporate parks.
Yeah. We were discussing scheduling the public hearing, we can have a future agenda to schedule a public hearing once we get some of that worked out.
Well, we had, we wanted to get something done, resolution on your schedule of a public hearing, and the notice of the agreement, so, type of general, we just got to do this first. It's going to take lots of hours to serve out.
Everybody good to move on to the next?
Anything we're going to do?
Move on to the next one, well, probably nobody wants to talk about that Rhino Fire Department. I don't know anybody.
We're getting ready to move in next week.
You don't have a room?
The next item on our agenda is Rhino Fire and Rescue Facilities.
Thank you for hanging with us, Jack.
Hey, that's all right. Appreciate the invitation to be here. Good evening, board members. Chairman Tuck, Mr. Meadows, my name's Jack Murphy. I'm with Thompson Litten. I'm an architect and a VP of the company, and I want to, I realize you've been here for quite a while now, so I'm going to make this easy on everyone and just give you an update on four different projects that are in various phases of development right now that we're involved with, Thompson Litten, and one that I, several that I know are near and dear to you board members, and Mr. King in particular, so without further ado, I'll just move along right into the fire, the current new fire station project, and review that with you. And if there are any questions going along, please just interject. You can see image here of where construction is as of last Tuesday, but just to give you a quick summary of the project, early spring, we received four competitive bids on the project. We awarded the contract that was under budget to price buildings of Rocky Mountain, Virginia, and we were also able to include two of the alternates to that bid price that I think were very good prices, one for completion of a loop road and also to upgrade the pavement on the project. Notice received was issued in May, just about the halfway point now in terms of our overall schedule. Still shooting for a May completion, that'd be final completion, and as of today, there are no actual change orders, and the only discussions along those lines so far have been related to potential for some delays due to, well, as you know, the weather, how it's been in the last two months in particular with all the rain that we've had. From a pay application standpoint, the contractor is only about 25% along the way. The latest schedule we got shows that they believe to be about two weeks behind. I know that's a common contractor reply, just two weeks, but we have seen their efforts to keep things moving along, and as Mr. King pointed out, he saw lights over there late at night and on the drive over here earlier today. Things are moving along pretty well now. We're up by the ground, the rough grading is complete, all the ENS measures are in place, the steel building is erected. We did begin pouring the concrete slab on Wednesday. They hope to do the other half of the building probably the week, next week, so it's projected to be complete by December 5th, and if you go by there, you can see that the roof is moving along quite a bit as well. I'll give you a quick update on where we are with the site, so you can have a better understanding where things stand. Across the top of the page is Route 8, Rhino Road there, and the entrance into the facility, and what's in yellow is the footprint of about a 19,150 square foot building. This portion here represents the truck bay, double-loaded truck bays, and this is the administrative core of the facility. One of the alternates was to add this loop road to allow ease of traffic flow throughout as well as the returning trucks that would come in the rear and drive through the bays, and to help separate that traffic from other traffic on the site. And then also, the primary areas in and out of the truck bays are concrete, but the remaining areas are paving, and we've upgraded that to heavy-duty paving. The limits of disturbance are about seven and a quarter acres. Final project goes back to that original five acres that was originally dedicated to the project. Some of that limits is obviously just for space for construction, lay-down area, ENS measures that are temporary, but also to make the utility connections, which is, you know, a little tricky on this project. A water line, not so much, but it was made right in front of the site here with a, there is a steel sleeve under Route 8. They make a, they made a wet connection to that existing line that runs up to the building. Sanitary sewer, however, we do have an independent sewer pump, force main, and that runs, the pump's located about here, and that extends down along the site, along Route 8 to the entrance with Turnberry Lane, and then up that hill connects there, so it's about a 1,300 or 1,400-foot force main for the project. All that has been installed on under the road. We made the connection that's sitting right outside the building now for final connection to the building, so all that's gone reasonably well and well-coordinated with the towns, I'm sorry, with the counties, public works, with Mr. Frank overseeing that. This is just a quick summary of the project itself and some of the features of the building. As I said, it's 19,150 square foot building. It's replacing the existing 9,300 square foot facility located less than a mile down the road. This will be for both volunteer and career firefighters. There are plans for bunk rooms at a later date, so we've made provisions for future installation of sprinklers that are required for any kind of overnight stay. You can see some of the other features of the building here. I think one of the hallmarks of this, though, is related to the safety of the facility and the introduction of the decontamination rooms, the way that the equipment will be treated, and to, again, to provide safe equipment and conditions for the firefighters. Overall, I think things are going really well on the project. The contractor has been very good to work with. He has stated he feels he's a little behind right now, but a lot of that is going to be attributed to weather, so we're pleased with how that's moving. This is just rendering it, I think most of you've seen before, to give you an idea what that finished product will be. This is the long view here is what you'd see right from Rhino Road. You can see the entrance to the six truck bays. To the left, we have a metal roof over a brick masonry veneer and a split-faced concrete block base all around the building and stuff. Any questions on that project?
Do we want to go through each one of the...
Yeah.
Okay, let's go through all, yes, thank you.
Okay. Back in July, we were contracted through our term contract to do a study, because as everybody knows, with the fire department moving out of the existing, we'll have a vacant facility, and of course, the rescue squad has earmarked that building. That's been in the, in the planning stages, so we want to be able to meet with the rescue squad folks, understand what their programmatic needs are, evaluate that building that they're in right now, what some of its physical needs may be, what potential future uses would be, but then also what might need to take place to the existing fire station to accommodate their needs. So, that's real quickly, I'll just go over what we reviewed. On the left is the existing fire station and existing floor plan. You can see of the 9,300 square feet, well more than half is dedicated to the equipment bays at about 5,700 square feet. On the right is the existing rescue squad building. It's located up on top of that hill, right off Auburn, or the High School Drive, much smaller building, about 3,000 square feet, half of which, again, is really a garage space more than anything. The rescue squad building, constructed in 2004, does have some code compliance issues, particularly with the fact that there is bunk rooms in there right now, but there are no provisions for sprinkler or fire suppression within that building. There are some physical needs, this updates, some water infiltration and so forth. There is a generator in the building, but overall, a lot of the existing systems are still in that building and functioning. One thing I do want to point out, though, you see on this map here that the way that property is currently deeded, it actually shares a lot with the recycling center. It's not on its own property right now. Fire station, 9,300 square feet, but constructed in 1985. I think Mr. King and Chief Saul will tell you it served the county and the area very well for at least 20-plus years, but obviously with the growth of the community, hasn't been able to meet those needs. It remains in relatively good condition. There are some, you know, things to be expected with just normal wear and tear and maintenance of the building. Plenty of parking, great access straight out onto Route 8 there, and really well-suited for the needs of the rescue squad. We did meet with the chief of the rescue squad along with Chief Saul, Bill Yeager, the building official, and Scott Woodrum with the county engineering. We viewed what their needs would be and how that may work in the new building. We arrived at a total square footage, which is a combination of what's already there that we're not necessarily going to modify. For example, a mechanical room that might be 400 square feet, well, they may not actually need that, but it's already there, so that's just the space that we had. And then the existing equipment is at 5,775, so the other things are needs that they were hoping to incorporate into the building, such as additional offices, larger training areas, medical storage, things that would be in tune with what a state-of-the-art rescue squad would require. So, to that end, we tried to take that program and determine what's the best way to make it fit and work within the building. We came up with two initial options. This option one here essentially accommodated all their needs, and we were able to do that by taking one of the, this is the existing plan, we took this entire bay here and utilized that to provide additional office space, day rooms, radio room, that sort of thing, and then also included additional medical and building-wide storage and enlarged the training room. Second option, retain that bay and have in addition to the building slightly smaller square footage, but when it's new construction, it's going to cost more, so we look at these two options, and option one shows us what a total project costs at 1.1 million, option two, 1.6. First question, everyone says, how can we go from a 3,000 square foot building to a 9,001 and have to spend all this money, right? So, obviously, there's got to be another way to skin this cat, so we spent a lot of time working with Mr. Woodrum and trying to develop other ways that we could accommodate the rescue building's needs. And one was, we don't know, I have a specific drawing for this, was, but was to just convert what's in the existing space right there to meet their needs, but don't add any of the extras, don't add the offices, don't add the training space, those sorts of things. Brought the cost down substantially, but it's not really serving them much use as we look into the future for their needs. A fourth option was investigated, and one that the county suggested that perhaps we could pull out the bunk requirement, because with that comes a lot of additional costs with fire suppression and sprinklers and smoke barriers and that sort of thing, and potentially look at a modular trailer on the site. Of course, with that, there'd be maintenance aspects, we'd have to tie utilities to it. Our cost to renovate the building is still just under $500,000, but that doesn't include the cost of obtaining these trailers. So, one last option was reviewed, and this again was through the input from the building official, Mr. Yeager, and working with Scott, and actually one of the modular trailer companies that we thought initially, could we actually park a trailer in one of the bays? When we started evaluating the cost, he admitted that that just wasn't worth it. You can stick-fill this thing for that price, and we can locate it in the building on one side, then we can, to give you an idea of where we'd put it on, such that this entire wall then will be a smoke barrier. We'd elevate this, the colored areas to allow ease of utility installation, that sort of thing, not do any improvements to the existing, leave it just as it is right now. And that would give us, sorry I jumped there, that's my cost sheet there, but we're in the neighborhood of about $500,000 complete to do the entire thing with all design work. $435,000 total project cost is what was projected to undertake that. So, I think for the most part, it was well-vetted, we were able to address the code needs, we were able to address the programmatic aspects, and hopefully provide an adequate space for the rescue squad that would serve them well into the future. Be plenty of room for growth within that existing equipment bays, and certainly that site location is ideal for them. With that being stated, I guess the question is then what happens to the existing rescue squad building? As I said, it's constructed in 2004. It's a very plain Jane sort of building. There is some deferred maintenance that is required there, but I'd say that the biggest challenge for this property is its access. It's up a very steep hill, there's very limited parking there, there's essentially no ADA accessibility. If we were to provide that from anything, from parking to just walkways, there'd be a lot of grading required and retaining walls and that sort of thing. So, our recommendation would be some sort of county maintenance facility perhaps, or maybe there's a use for the schools or trade-off along those lines. I think, you know, whether it's, we have plows or tractors or things like that, obviously half of it is set up as a garage right now. It probably... It'd probably make the most sense for its further repurposing. Any questions about those two studies?
Mr.?
One left.
Yeah.
Do you want to go for the number three?
At this point, we may want to pause for a minute, because I think while we're absolutely not looking for funding this evening, we would be very interested in hearing the board's thoughts on what is proposed for the existing fire station to convert it to the rescue squad. As you heard Jack say, we evaluated a couple of options that went north of a million dollars pretty quick and realized that was a lot of money for not a lot of space. Went back and reevaluated the options. I want to commend Scott and Bill Yeager, our building official, who've spent a lot of time talking to folks, working with Thompson and Litten and the staff there, and came up with that, the option five, which was the last one that Jack showed, that shows basically converting one of the bays into the living area. It does not expend any money on the existing side of the building where the training rooms, the dayrooms, those are. That option is about $435,000 based on current projections, but before we move further along that path, we would certainly appreciate any thoughts from the board on that.
So do we want to, let's see, Supervisor Shepard, I guess we know Supervisor, do you want to, I guess are we looking for consensus on the option five then? Is that what?
Can I ask some questions?
Yes, sure.
So this is my first term, so I'm going to ask what could be considered a stupid question here. When we get proposals like this, does it tell us, you know, the estimated life of one of these options, any of these options? Meaning, like, I think the new fireplace is going to last for 50 years, let's just say. I don't know. Right. But option five may only last, because you're taking a bay, may only last 30 years versus option one might last 50 years and it's, and construction's cheap now compared to 30 years from now. You know what I mean? So do you have those kinds of estimates?
There are trade-offs. I can't say beyond 30 years. I mean, we will construct buildings similar to this building or the courthouse. Public buildings in general usually have that 30- to 50-year range, sometimes 80, maybe looking higher. What, it's hard to project is the programmatic requirements, you know, what's the growth of the Ryner community and Auburn community? At what point do they feel that a separate facility will be able to provide that access and response time? I believe, again, if you look at the program that was developed, that there is far more space available within those bays, the truck bays, than what is currently required. I mean, they have two or three vehicles, those truck bays can hold six or eight right now, okay? So they can double-load on the rescue vehicles, they're much shorter than the others, so they can put two or three in one lane. So there's a lot of growth from an equipment standpoint that they could even lose one more bay perhaps if necessary and still be able to provide, I believe, for the foreseeable maybe 20-year future.
That was the only question I have.
Supervisor Shepard?
I guess the question I would have would be, of all the people that were involved in this plan, does option five give them what they need to operate for the next 20 year, I guess? I mean, as far as, you know, I'm not sure what I'm asking, but...
I think you're looking for a concurrence from the existing rescue squad chief, that this will meet his needs immediately.
Right.
foreseeable future.
Yeah, Supervisor Shepard, I've consulted with Jason Rube, the chief of the rescue squad, and he concurs with our strategy.
Okay. I think that's all I have right now.
Supervisor King?
On this one, are you adding a shower?
Yes, sir. You can see within the, we've separated the bunk and the associated toilet and shower room. That would all be new construction in the new bay.
So you're going to have this new shower down there and the old one's going to be where it's at now?
All this will remain exactly as it is right now.
Because we just have one shower?
Well, there'll be one female shower and one male shower in the bunk area.
Oh, okay, so you're going to move two about there?
They're over here, that's right.
So you have three altogether?
That will be now, yes.
Are you doing anything to the existing bathroom in this firehouse?
Other than very minor upgrades and some of the deferred maintenance, I mean, the larder, like, we're not changing all the finishes, we're not...
You know, it's cracking in there. I guess you've seen that?
We have, but we're not, they're not concerned about that being, you know, anything, being structural in nature.
If we want to do it, we need to do it correctly. Because the, it's cracking in there. The floor's coming up, the tile...
In the bathroom, where the ceramic tile is.
In the men's bathroom, yeah.
That's right.
I think if we want to do it, I mean, you're going to spend, what's that, say 400? And you still have cracks in the men's restroom? That don't make sense.
I don't disagree. I think some of those smaller items could be, can be addressed with the finishes, whether we pick and choose. We have included a small contingency there from a design contingency standpoint, which are for those items that are added to the scope of work.
I would invite in you supervisors who want to meet me out there, I'll show you what I'm talking about. Thank you very much for all your hard work. Thank you, boss.
Supervisor Pichakowski?
Is it going to get a new roof too?
No. The new roof was on, put on this building three years ago. There is, there has been some reported leaking around the front entry that Scott has been working with those, with the installer on as warranty items right now, so the new roof is not planned for.
Okay. I thought I saw on one of the earlier plans, one or two or three, that I thought, I thought there was a new roof for it, but, no, I'm fine, that's good.
The summary of the building indicated that there was a new roof three years ago.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Chair Vamots?
I don't have any questions. I appreciate the presentations. I actually think that the cost to do this is significantly less than I thought it would be, and so I'm not unhappy with that. So I don't have any questions right now, but thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
Also, thank you for the presentation, but I would agree with Todd, that if there are cosmetic things or whether they lead to structural problems, we all know about the cracks in Old Blacksburg High School, what happened there. I would agree that we go ahead and, if we're going to do this, we need to fix those cosmetic things and make it acceptable.
Just a few things. One, I want to appreciate the thinking outside of the box, okay? Now, I'm not in favor of mobile unit outside or anything along those lines, but I like the idea that you fleshed out all the different ideas, went through them, worked with the rescue squad to find out what they needed. I agree with Supervisor King and I think all the supervisors, addressing some of the cosmetic issues in the older aspect of the building, to make it look, you know, newer, especially if there's issues in the bathroom. I've been out there, I guess it was about six months, eight months ago, but addressing those issues, this is what we want to have, and obviously, we need the bunk rooms because anymore, you're on call 24/7, and having a place where our volunteers can go, watch a movie, wait for that call to come in, those type of things, that's warm and inviting, will help us to be able to get and keep volunteers. So thank you very much for your work.
I could just add one comment about option five, and again, the building official, Mr. Yeager, was instrumental in helping us. What is the bare minimum we can do that still provides for their program? You're not going to spend less than this, okay? So we do go back and add some of the cosmetic things. I do feel that the cracking is not structural in nature. Yes, it is there, and a lot of that is just, you know, whether control joints and some slight settlement, but I don't have any problem with what your statements are. I would agree with that.
Well, and the reason we wanted to go through this with you is you saw options one and two were north of a million. This one is, as I call it, the bear bones, get it done at 435. What we've heard, which is what I expected we would hear, is go back and take a look at a few other things and come back with a number that's probably going to be higher than that, but still less than options one and two, so...
I'm just concerned because you're putting that new stuff in out the bays, and then when you walk in that part, I mean, I'm not concerned that it's structural, you know. I'm just talking about the tiles falling off.
Or even some paint. I mean, if this piece is going to be new, a fresh coat of paint would be nice.
Fresh coat of paint would go a long ways.
Thank you. You can't paint tile.
No, I mean, the other rooms.
That's good direction. One project left.
All right. Okay, so...
Does Staff Field, they have...
Yes, thank you. We just wanted to make sure y'all were okay with us continuing to move, because we're moving.
All right. Last and final project, it's only related because Thompson and Litten's working on it, but this project actually started back in, I want to say, 2015. We did do a small study, myself and Steve Phillips worked on it back in 2016, but recently, the county advertised for proposals and received proposals and shortlisted a few firms for interviewing, and this is actually right from our interview presentation right here on, from October 18th, for the renovations of the old sheriff's office. And most of you are probably quite aware of this, this is the, this what encompasses right now. It's all, it's right there on the courthouse block in the center of Christiansburg, and from this aerial view, you can see right here, this is the original 1890s building, two-story building, and then in early 1980s, this two-story addition, and this is the single-story 911 center was constructed. You can see, there's a view from the rear parking lot, constructed about the same time as the jail, you can tell by the matching brick there. What transpired with the development of the courthouse project was, if some of you recall at that, I know Mary, you were on board at that time, that really protracted process related to parking requirements. And it held this project up for a year. One of the scenarios, though, with taking into consideration future development of public safety building as well as a jail addition, was that once the sheriff's building were vacated, that it would come down and provide additional parking. Well, since then, those jail plans have been postponed indefinitely, the town's requirements have changed a little bit, and that in turn led to a white paper that Deputy Administrator authored here back in 2015, and really, it was just a means to, is there a better way of doing things? These were the, this was the summary conclusions that Carol had come up with, and was there a way to relocate some existing county functions on a block that makes sense because it's efficient with similar services, and then at the same time, save dollars for the county, not only by reduced lease payments, but also potentially putting something on the market and getting cash value and putting it on the tax roll. So that was really the initiative and the impetus that began the study that I started with Steve Phillips. And so you know what the plan is then, was to evaluate the court services that are currently located in the former church building here at Radford Road and Depot Street, and then the magistrate office, which is in this building next door to Subway on Franklin Street, and then take those two services and co-locate those onto the courthouse block in the former sheriff's office. That original study, we spent some time determining what their needs were, it was very brief. We did, they were not extensive interviews, but we did speak with one individual, representative from each location, scratched out some floor plans from that work, developed what a program might be for, based on their specific needs, not only current, but looking into the future, and arrived at, you know, all on paper without a drawing, of about a need of 6,300 square feet. Currently, the sheriff's building is 5,900 square feet, so we were pretty close. We did know that the sheriff's building was going to require a number of handicapped, accessible additions, such as an elevator perhaps, some new stairs, obviously, a lot of upgrades, replacement of all building systems, that sort of thing. And in 2016, we developed the cost that would show what it would take to bring that up to current code and accommodate those two programs within this building. And that was about, again, in 2016, assuming construction in fall 2017, which we're now a year past that, it was about 1.235 million dollars. Now, what the county's looking for us to do, we were selected to undertake this study, we now want to do what we're calling a final architectural report, to go back and revisit that data, do a more in-depth analysis of the existing building, determine exactly what things need to be replaced, what sort of structural upgrades may be required, meet with the current magistrate, meet with the current other tenants within the building, as well as work closely with the town of Christiansburg and the building official, what bare necessity that we need, particularly from an ADA and plumbing upgrades and those sorts of things. So again, the effort is that how can we keep that cost from going any higher and perhaps drive it back down? There is concern that with the plan that we came up initially, that we're taking a parking space or two for the new elevator, maybe there's a way to get it into the building if it's required, and we can salvage those couple parking spaces, because they are instrumental to what's going on with the sheriff and the jail operation. So we're just now getting ready to kick this study off. We, you know, our plan is to come back to the county with, again, we'll provide a couple of options, you know, what do we see as a code bare minimum to meet their programmatic requirements, and then maybe some options that would show a little further development or something that will give them a facility that will serve the county a little further into the future. At that time, we come back to the board and review it with you and ask you for your direction and what your priorities are at that time, particularly from a budgetary standpoint.
Supervisor Shepard, any questions on this project?
I don't. I'll be curious to see what they come back with.
Supervisor King?
Yeah, we was discussing this before. Are we also getting a price to renovate third floor to 911 building for the same project?
If that's something the board would like for us to explore, we can. We've guesstimated it, but we've not spent any engineering time evaluating that further.
To be used for what?
For the same project that we're going to do the sheriff, old sheriff's office.
What would you put in the third floor?
That's why I just said.
The magistrate's office?
Yeah, whatever we're going to put in the old sheriff's office.
Court services.
Court services as well?
Because in this building here, you're going to have to put elevators, is that correct?
Well, the original plan, I don't have the floor plan from the initial study we did. The magistrate would be housed in that single-story portion of the, what is now the 911 center. That allows for a separate independent access for the public and then a separate access for the arresting deputy along with whoever has been arrested, close proximity to the jail process, they're not moving through, up and down through the public safety building. So those are concerns for both the magistrate and the sheriff, to be able to have it close, but not within.
I'd like to get prices on both of them.
I'd like to know also, in my mind, the sheriff's office, public safety, that is our expansion for our sheriff's office for the future, and that's just me thinking. And the other aspect of it is with court services, when somebody is filing for custody, they have to go to the court services. And so you're going to have to have that security in that building. I know, maybe you can program elevators to not open up on certain, I know you have to be buzzed in currently, the way it is. I don't know how that works necessarily in a public safety building, that everybody potentially who is, especially anyone who's representing themselves on a custody petition is going to have to go in there. So it's not just a law enforcement use for court services. So it's not just a law enforcement use for court services. So I would want to hear from the sheriff and their thoughts, or his thoughts on that as well.
Well, I, my thoughts after working 25 years in law enforcement in this county, that I can't see how that would flow very well. Officer makes an arrest, and he's got to go in a building and ride an elevator all the way up to the third floor to see a magistrate, and then back down. Sometimes these prisoners get a little bit rowdy. For some reason, they don't like being arrested. And I think it would just be easier all the way around, especially safety-wise, to be able to take them right out of the vehicle, right into the magistrate's office. I think it would just flow better. And you do have to have that separation between the court services and the magistrate's office, mainly because you're dealing with juveniles over there, so.
Yeah.
I think, I think utilizing the old building is probably the best way to go. I'm not against looking at the third floor, but I don't, I don't see how it would possibly work very smoothly. I think it would be better off served, especially safety-wise, to keep it the way it is now than to use the third floor.
You got a third floor sitting there doing nothing?
But.
We're paying heat and air for nothing.
But I think one of the things you remind us of all the time is safety, safety first, and that would be.
There's law enforcement, there's law enforcement in that building. That's the safest place you can be.
Okay. Picture yourself in a little elevator with somebody you've just arrested.
At 2:30 or 3 o'clock in the morning.
Where they go, try, they're in an elevator.
After they knock you out, they probably will.
They've got to think now, they're going down the road to magistrate office, then they got to load them back up and bring them back up to the jail.
That is correct.
I just think we owe the taxpaying citizens of Montgomery County to look at both options.
Well, like I said, I would want to hear from folks. And then we've got two people who are former law enforcement. We've got the sheriff who's involved with law enforcement. I can only tell you about what court services is because that's going to be involving civil cases, and that that's where they go to get a petition for juvenile to be arrested as well. Then you're going to have juveniles reporting for probation who are coming in there. Then you're going to have Steve coming in with his client, with, my client and his newest arrestee, going up in that same elevator with those folks.
Is that building that dangerous?
No, it's not the building. Todd, I don't think you understand what we're saying. It's not the building that's dangerous, but if he's arresting somebody and then April is there to file for custody, they're riding in that same elevator to go up together to the third floor.
In handcuffs.
And Steve doesn't arrest just anybody, he saves it for those serious people that he's arresting. You're not taking those up on a traffic ticket, you're taking them up because they've done something.
They're in handcuffs.
You may not think that some of my clients fight when they're in handcuffs, but some of them do.
If you're in a little.
And you're in an elevator.
We'll talk about that later.
I'm just saying, I think we need to look at our options.
Okay.
I think Todd's going to show us the bathroom and Steve's going to put himself in some handcuffs and show you how you can fight.
Vice Chair Demots. Oh, wait, did I skip you, Supervisor Fitchakowski?
No, I just said my piece.
Vice Chair Demots.
Well, that was certainly an interesting conversation. I have limited experience with court services, actually none, and no experience being arrested or arresting anybody, so I'm going to defer to everybody else and follow the conversation without really much insight.
Supervisor Biggs?
I would also like to know what the sheriff would think of Todd's idea, because I mean, I get what you're trying to do, Todd, but I would like that, you know, input about, you know, how that would work. And I'm all for like looking at the old sheriff's office and, you know, seeing what you bring back. I think it makes sense that it's close to the jail. I like that part of it. And, you know, people would be able to come, and I can sort of see how you're thinking of the parking part of it, so, yeah. It'll be interesting to see what you come back with.
Supervisor Bone?
So the last time we were talked to about that sheriff's, the two buildings, I could have sworn that, that, like, the darker brick building is falling apart. Am I right about that?
No.
It's the gray building.
That's what I hear. At one time, that was the magistrate's office.
Okay, so the darker brick building is in pretty good shape?
Relatively speaking.
Relatively speaking.
Compared to the old.
Montgomery County.
It has good bones.
That's what I was going to ask. It's got good bones.
There's no structural, evidence of structural failure. The sheriff didn't move out anytime too soon, I can tell you that, particularly if you've been in the basement, and particularly how cramped the quarters were from the safety standpoint. But I believe, you know, it has some redeeming qualities to it. It does contribute to the historical district. It's not on the registry, but it contributes to the district as a whole. And there's some redeeming qualities there in the front of the building in particular that I think could, at low cost, be, you know, returned to some degree to continue to contribute. And maybe some of that detailing could be applied to the rest of the building, whether we wanted to open up the, if this became the magistrate's building, we wanted to add some fenestration or windows, punctuate that along the street front. And we'd look to the original building for some design guidance perhaps. But I do think it's considerably much better than the building next to it, better condition.
So would it be better if we use that $1.2 million to build a standalone building somewhere else versus refurbish these buildings? You know, sometimes refurbishing buildings is.
It is.
More expensive than, you know.
I agree with that.
Let's find some property.
I think given the square footage that we're talking about, if you, we'd have a tough time doing this for probably under $200 and some odd dollars a square foot. The new fire station is $249 a square foot. Your economy of scale is such a small, would only drive that cost per square foot up a little bit. The question would be then, where? So do we have to acquire property? Do you tear these down and build in the same place? I mean, those are good questions. But I believe, based on those preliminary numbers, the renovation costs would still be less than new. Doesn't mean that everything's in exactly the place you want it to be. You may have a little bit larger office somewhere just because that's the space that's there.
And then, two more questions. Would tax credits be used to refurbish that historical building? Are both of them historical buildings?
We actually looked into that prior to interviewing for the work. And again, it's the economy of scale, the effort that would go into trying to acquire those or what you'd get out of it, you'd probably spend than what you get in return.
And then the last question I have, and I don't know if it's relevant, but somewhere along the line, I was talking to Sheriff Parton about, there's some drive-through or pull-through for the jail that just isn't big enough these days, and I just want to make sure that that's not part of this proposal, or it is part of this proposal?
See it right here. It's a vehicle sallyport in the existing jail, so the plan is, you know, they're communicating with the dispatch within the jail, and they open the door, you pull in, the door closes behind you, you transport the, I know there's been issues with that, the size of it and so forth, and whether or not it's used on a regular basis, I can't speak to that, but I think that's what you're asking about, and it's not part of.
It's not, but I'd be interested in finding out how much it would cost, and if we're going to appropriate X million dollar, millions of dollars, and it's only going to cost another, economy's of scale 100 or $200,000, it might be great to do it at the same time. So that's all I have.
One other aspect related to the tax credits, it would only apply to the portion that is the 1890s, so you're looking at probably a third of the total square footage, too.
I just have a couple. One, I do believe that this is a project we've got to move forward on because the current situation is not safe with the magistrate's office. And you think, well, it's just down the street, but it's just down the street. And when you're talking about seconds and having backup coming from the jail being right there, that's an important thing. And then having to put, take someone out of the car, go into the magistrate's office, do the arrest, then put them back in the car, then drive up the road, then take them out again, gives opportunity perhaps for some of those defendants', family members', friends, to get involved with that situation. I do have a question about the building next door because I'm sure I'm going to get some, after this comes to light. Your professional opinion, how bad a shape is it in?
I have not personally been in that building since development of courthouse project. Again, Mary, you may remember this, but at one time, we actually investigated the cost of moving that building.
Right.
And to co-locate it down near the museum, people would be involved in dropping power lines and signals on the street there and so forth. Some thought that, well, let's try to move it, hopefully it will fall apart when we do. So, I mean, that was 10 years ago.
Okay. And I know nothing is free. If you had to give an estimate of just, to provide us an estimate of stabilizing that building so it wouldn't fall in, and perhaps just not using it for public use, but maybe just storage, but keeping it as a shell almost. To get that kind of estimate, how much would it cost county taxpayers just to get an estimate on how, as a separate issue, just to have this be a shell building that you look at, it looks nice on the outside, but it's only used to store maybe voting machines in there where it can be locked up, but not something that where the general public is coming in and out of?
So you're asking for a structural evaluation and then recommendations of what to do?
Right. And a ballpark, ballpark figure as how much it would cost taxpayers to do something like that?
$3,500.
$3,500?
That's my ballpark guess.
Thank you very much. Might hold you to that ballpark figure. Any, does that create any?
Well, there was just a lot of interest about citizens not wanting anything to happen to it because of its historical value. That's part of the discussion that was held.
And I know I've gotten emails when the first, the initial, I guess it was, the balcony came off of it and the like. I got a lot of emails saying, are you going to be tearing it down? And I'd like to at least have explored how much it would cost us to do that, just the very limited, and that way we could maybe make a judgment call on that.
To stabilize it.
Can I ask my fellow board member, so if he's coming back with a report of a ballpark figure of $3,500, to at least explore that? Is that something that we could consider?
I would say no.
Okay, there's one no.
That building is so bad shape, we need to get an estimate tearing it down.
Yes.
It is a hazard to the citizens that walks down that road. And if the majority of this board votes to refurb the old sheriff's department, that building needs to go.
Any other?
I mean, look around that, what the town has done.
I know.
Look how beautiful they've made their town, and then look at that white building. Really?
And Todd, I get what you're saying. I'm trying to figure out, to make it look like, as pretty as the stuff is across where the antique store is and where Mockenberg Cafe is, to make it look consistent, but just be a shell building, because I'm afraid what it would cost to, it would probably cost millions to fix it.
But it's a, it's a building that would be out of place, too. I mean, it, it would really have no function when everything around there is law enforcement or court-related. It's, it wouldn't make any sense, and it would be a money pit.
The way I would look at it, I mean, with all due respect, I'm not going to spend my money to fix a building just to look at.
That's what I'm trying to think, a shell or a storage building, that's.
I can't ask taxpayers to spend their money doing the same thing.
I get what you're saying.
So what is the historical contribution of the building? Like, what, for what purpose is it historical?
It was the old clerk's office, and there's some folks that know a lot more about the building than I do, but it has been there a long time. I don't know if there's anyone else who knows more about the building than I do, but that's, when I got the emails, it's the old clerk's office, it's been there, you know, it's.
And I believe it's on the national register. Now, that doesn't, that doesn't designate anything special other than it just recognizes this historic fact.
It's historic because it's old.
It is on the registry.
I'm nearly positive it is. I think Bob Hoff told me that at one point.
But is it, I mean, is it historic because it's old, or is it historic because of some?
It's historic because it's been there a long time.
And it was the clerk's, original clerk's office, because the courthouse used to be right next door to where that is, and it was torn down and renewed, which is the sheriff's office was built literally while it was going back and forth. So I, do I hear, it looks like I'm a minority in exploring just to get in the figure. Is that fair to say?
I would support it, but.
I would like to learn more about the building to see if there is any.
Maybe we can bring it up and everybody can think about it, and we'll take it up to December the 10th, and then we'll put it behind us if there's not support to explore. I know, I understand, there's two noes down there, and there may be six noes.
And if it falls down, then we'll know where to look.
We've discussed this several times, if something falls off there and hits somebody, you know where we're at.
Yeah, I'm saying call 10.
Chris Tuck said.
Well, that's, yeah, that's what the whole thing is.
The hour is late. Is there any other questions?
I just, as a concluding comment of Jack, I appreciate the time and effort you've put into all these projects so far. These are all issues that are going to be discussed in the months ahead, and one of the things I just want you to remember from the presentation denying is, in the months ahead, we're going to begin to look for probably between a million and a half and $2 million to address these projects that we've talked about, so.
I guess we have to cut Chris's pay, I reckon.
Yeah. Whatever.
I really would like to know where that pay's been going. I need to ask my wife. Is, any other questions? Is there a motion to come out of work session?
Thank you, Judge. Second.
Motion by Supervisor King, second by Supervisor Shepard. Is there any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Settle.
I thought maybe you want to stay in work session there for a minute. First item on new business is abandonment of section of Barn Road. Is there a motion?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Supervisor King, second by Supervisor Shepard. Is there any discussion regarding this? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Settle.
Resolution in support of I-81 improvements. Is there a motion?
Fell, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Biggs, second by Vice Chair Demots. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Mr. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Demots?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Settle.
We'll have this for the legislative dinner Wednesday night as well.
Next item is Montgomery County Public Schools supplemental appropriations, and I know that the members of the school board are here, but is there a motion to start us off?
Fell, moved.
Second.
There's a motion by Supervisor Bone and a second by Supervisor Biggs. Discussion. And I'll start off with this one, Vice Chair Demots. Well, wait, no, I should have down my sheet, it should be Todd King, or back to you, Supervisor King. Any questions or comments?
No.
Supervisor Fitchakowski?
I'm not really clear on the, looking at the letter and how the money is broken down into where it's going to be used at. I mean, it's, they're pretty basic. I was wondering, are there any teachers going to be hired from this, or, because there's nothing in the letter.
So of the $386,000, $350 of it is tied to the ADM because our count went up by 62 students. Of that, all of the funds of the 386, which the other ones are coming out of three grants, all flowing instructionally, two being for teachers, both in our CT programs. One's on our CN programs, which is a partnership with New River Valley as well as Radford University. within two years upon their graduation from high school. And then the second component is bringing a cybersecurity program, which is one of the things that government call ahead, they push. And they're well-paying jobs, like their average pays about $86,000 to start to bring that program into Blacksmith High School. We currently have the program in CHS that's running very well, and we bring it over at VHS now.
So, 386 gets us two, two teachers?
Well, you got $30,000 has to go into grants, and those are going to enhance the grants program. And then we also are going to bring in two APs. Five of the 11 elementary schools currently do not have an assistant principal. So, it's going to be a half AP split between two schools and two schools. Bellevue would be the only school left without an AP. And in a lot of times, people think that an elementary school doesn't need an assistant principal in the building. That's really not true, particularly in today's life for safety issues. When it's only the building principal that's the administrator on site, that individual's having to deal with parents, that individual's having to deal with staff and the issues that are there. They're having to deal with their teacher, with their students. And then also, they've got the requirements of doing their evaluations and other things. So, we're asking those administrators to do a tremendous amount of work in a short period of time and juggling a lot of balls. And when they're doing that, they're not able to put their focus and attention on the rest of their building. So, having that assistant principal gives that, that building administrator, the principal, the ability to really fulfill and do their job correctly and rightly, which the ultimate is the safety of our staff and students.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Now, Vice Chair Demots.
I do not have any questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Biggs?
I do not have any questions, and I know what it's like in an elementary school because the principal's not always there anyway.
Correct.
Because they're pulled for different things.
Supervisor Bone?
No questions. Thank you.
Supervisor Shepard? Are these funds? I had to worry and lost it. Are you told how you have to spend this money for the state?
Yes, sir. That passes through just like any of the rest of our basic A funds that we get on an annual basis.
So, I got to ask. Back a few months ago, it was highly, highly important that we have resource officers in all the schools, and there's none on this list.
Well, you get down to a balancing act. You know, you've got the situation where your career technical program's expanding. It's one of the things, and particularly in 2021, that the state's pushing. We right now believe are the only state in the entire Commonwealth that has a fully implemented program on that. Number two, that assistant principal is a safety issue. Would it be great to have a school resource officer? Yes, sir, it would be. But it gets to be that, as you, as you have to deal with the budget each year for the county, it becomes a balancing act, and those are just difficult choices. And right now, this is the choice that we think is the best for our state, students and staff.
Okay, that's all right. I have a follow-up question. I want to make sure, there was additional funds that came in roughly May from the state. I want to say that there were seven new teachers hired. Is that number correct?
Yes, sir, approximately correct, yes, sir.
All right. And, and so that was seven. So now, we're at nine new teachers with two assistant principals.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And roughly at about $1 million, $900,000 to $1 million by the time you put the money together?
Um, all in, about, probably close to a million more.
Okay, a million more. And I, I know that Supervisor King had brought, I mean, not Supervisor Shepard brought this up, but this is the priority for your board, is these additional hires. And because we had a lot of speakers coming up to us and saying, we, we've got to have these resource officers. And I understand, everybody's got to have priorities.
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And I know you said balancing.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
There was a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
Next is appropriations, county improvement. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Is there a, thank you. Motion by Supervisor Demots, second by Supervisor Bone. Discussion.
Did everybody get my email that I sent on this topic? Did anybody have any questions?
I couldn't understand any of it.
I'll use smaller words next time.
When was this council formed?
The Montgomery County Improvement Council was formed probably 20 years ago and went dormant, or maybe even longer than that.
Yes, it's been around.
And then it went, it went dormant for a number of years, and then has been recently reactivated. And I don't know why it ever went, kind of fell by the wayside.
I don't know. Just glad it's back.
Aw, thanks.
Well, we used to have this cleanup day, and the supervisors would even take part in it.
Brooming and blooming?
Yeah.
We still have that.
It was a big, it was a big to-do.
Yeah, we just had our 35th anniversary of brooming and blooming this year.
But it's sort of just, I don't know what happened.
Well, I think, so the request is for $125,000, $100 towards a renewable energy and specifically solar project, and then $25,000 to go into a reserve for the MCIC to use for initiatives like the county cleanup day or other functions. I spelled out so many in that, in that letter. And of course, that was just kind of me brainstorming what could happen. I certainly don't want that to be due to.
Did the requests come from you as a board member?
Yes.
So, so that means, like, if we want to request money as a board member for a project, then we just do it. I, I've never, never done that before, so, but that's what we do, just bring it up and...
That's what I did. I, I requested it be considered as a one-time appropriation for the MCIC to have as a pool.
Okay.
And, and as I have stated previously, if any board member wants to put something on the agenda, I've never said, you can't do that or anything along those lines. And Supervisor Demots brought it up, and then, and I asked for further explanation because I wanted to understand where this $25,000 was going to go and how it was going to be spent.
Yeah. I just think it's just, it's a different approach. Like, I've never, I guess I never thought about asking for money for a specific thing, you know? There are a lot of things I would like money for, though. So now, sort of think about that.
Any other discussion?
This $100,000, I mean, what are you going to do with that?
You know, we talked about it a little bit, and if you remember, in our extended work session, we talked about solar, and there was seemed to be a genuine support for, for looking at solar. We looked at, out at, at the Riner Fire Station as a potential site. And that, from hearing the, the contractors and things, that didn't work at that site necessarily. And in regards to roof structure, that's what I was told. But it's something, and this is basically some of the unallocated funds that we would be using. It was, I did bring it up that I wanted to vote and wanted to see that move forward on this, and I'm not committed to solar. I'm not saying that Chris Tuck knows which best renewable resource it is, but...
That's why I keep on saying renewable energy, specifically solar. Because that's how you phrased it, but, you know, renewable, there's a lot of wind around here. Solar's always a good application in this room, yes, especially.
And so that's one of the things that was put on, and Supervisor Demots asked for this to be put on as well. And then it came up again, and I mentioned it when we were voting on the gate station down at the, the, for runoff gas. And so, it is put on there. Now, I don't, I'm not claiming I know very much at all about solar. That's why having a group or a committee that does know something about it is a good idea in my mind.
Are you turning this $100,000 vote to Montgomery County Improvement Council?
For them to advise us as to where to put this solar.
It'll be, it'll be held in reserve.
Yeah, and they would be purely operating as an advisory, you know, studying the issue and then coming back with a report for us on, these are different ways it can be used and implemented for us to decide how that $100,000 would be actually used.
And I would hope that if now is not the right time to implement solar, they'll tell us that.
Yeah.
But we don't know.
Or if this isn't the right amount.
Because we have no data about.
Well, you know it's not the right amount. That $100,000 is not going to get you nowhere.
I don't think it would get too far.
It might buy one panel.
I, I believe it'll buy more than one panel, but I, at some point in time, you've got to take a step somewhere, and I guess I'm looking at this as a step.
See you later. Well, mine, mine is, we got what this board put priorities. We keep diverting money away from these priorities. I mean, it's like the county garage. This $125,000 would go a long ways in that garage. I mean, that's just my opinion.
I understand what you're saying about priorities, and I, I believe that we're going to be able to address the priorities that we've listed. But this is, as I understood it, and I asked the county administrator, is this something that we can afford to do? And asking the staff, obviously, we've got to make that decision. That's something that we've got to decide, and you're right. I mean, every time we make a decision to pull a dollar away from something, that's something different. But I don't believe that this will prevent us from doing the garage or Shaw's or Rescue or finishing up the rescue squad when it moves over.
Every dollar we pull away slides back.
Been a lot of discussion. Is there any other discussion?
Well, the people that are on the council, do they have the ability and the knowledge to find out about solar? Because I, my only experience with solar was, you know, having someone come to our house and evaluate how much it would cost to put solar in the house, and it was way too expensive for the time left that we would be living there, so.
So, I'll defer to Craig to answer that question. In my opinion, they represent such a broad range of skill sets, and also professionally have networked themselves in ways where if they don't know an answer, they would know the connection that would. But I would, I would like to hear Craig's answer to that question as well.
The Improvement Council is made up primarily of county employees from various departments.
Without due respect, we need to vote to stay in. It's almost 11 o'clock.
I tell you what, let's let Craig finish that, and then we can vote to extend it.
Okay. Sorry about that, Craig.
No worries. The Improvement Council is comprised of county staff. Vice Chair Demots is the board representative on that Improvement Council. That includes the Assistant General Services Manager, Bill Long, includes folks from building inspections, includes folks from planning and development, GIS. It's a, it's a very well-rounded group from various departments in the county. And I agree that if there's information that needs to be researched on a topic, they're very well-versed in, able to do that.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? There's a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Shepard?
Aye.
Mr. King? Ms. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Six ayes, one no.
Now, I've got to get back to where it was at.
Now, you vote to stay in?
Yes. Thank you Supervisor King. Is there a motion to extend our meeting past 11 o'clock?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
I'm afraid to ask for this vote, but, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. King?
Aye.
Ms. Fitchakowski?
Aye.
Ms., Mr. Mox?
Aye.
Ms. Biggs?
Aye.
Ms. Benn?
Aye.
Mr. Shepard?
It's getting to be a habit.
Aye.
Chair Tuck?
Aye.
Seven ayes.
And I had nothing to do with it. It's not all my fault.
Not all of your fault, but I think all seven of us had something to do with it. County attorneys report?
No report.
County administrators report?
A very brief report. Just a reminder to the board of the annual legislative dinner, that's this Wednesday night. Dinner's at 6:00, meeting's at 6:30. Also, a couple of emails went out, I think, today about the chamber annual dinner, which is next Thursday. And I'm tired. Is that the 6th? Thank you. It's the 6th. If you're interested in attending, please let Brian and/or Vicki know, and we'll make sure that you and a guest are covered. That's all I have.
And now, I keep losing my spot. Board supervisors reports. Supervisor Fitchakowski?
Right off the bat. I would, I intend at our legislative dinner to bring up an issue that was discussed at the VACO conference, which I thought was very interesting. One of the problems with using recently retired police officers as school security personnel is because of the rule that they have if they're receiving VRS, they can't work 40-hour week. That is something that I think the General Assembly needs to address if they're hoping to improve school security, because the, the cost to hire a recently retired police officer is much, much lower than, than a school resource officer. And there's going to be plenty of places they could be plugged into. Now, they're going to also create some other issues for the school board, but I think all those issues could be worked out. And from the time I was in that class, I, I kept thinking, they would be ideal for elementary schools. They would be ideal because they'd be in plain clothes, they wouldn't be displaying a weapon. And they could still do a lot of the same things that a school resource officer could do. They would also more than likely be an employee of the school division. Therefore, school division might find other duties for them to do while they're in the school. So, it's definitely something that needs to be explored, but the General Assembly has got to make, make some changes in order for it to happen. Because right now, all they can use, there is a program in place now where they can be used, but they, they can't be receiving VRS. So, that limits it to, like, federal law enforcement and localities that, that aren't on VRS, like, I think Roanoke City has their own retirement system, so somebody from there So, somebody from there could, could do it. But, but for all the other agencies that receive VRS, then that would be a problem. But I would like to, I plan on bringing that up on Wednesday, and I would also like to see us down the road, maybe have a resolution to send to the General Assembly too. That's all I got.
Supervisor Biggs?
So Steve, they don't have the same rule that they have in the public schools. Like, you can not come into the schools for 30 days, and then you can come into the school and serve, but you don't get any benefits because you're getting VRS. They don't have that same rule.
Is that a question?
I just wondered if that came up, because that's what happens in schools.
Well, I, I know they wouldn't have any benefits, which, again, reduces the cost, because they're, there are, most of them already have all the other benefits.
Might be a way to handle it that way. But that's good. Okay, I was just going to say, if you want to be on a VACO committee, make sure that you turn your form in by the end of the month. And to answer Steve's question earlier about, usually they meet in the summer at the Summer Summit in August, and then again, that Sunday of the annual meeting. So, it's usually two meetings. And then, the only other thing I have to report is there is a committee, a fundraising committee for the ACE program, and they had a meeting on November 7th. I attended, and they're planning a walk-run for early April, and, and so, they just wanted sort of input from different people in the community. So, there is fundraising going on, it's coordinating with New River Community College. So, as soon as I find out more, I'll spread it around.
Thank you. Supervisor Bone?
I would like to share the fact that Habitat Humanity is having three open houses and a dedication to, for the two townhomes that they've built in Christiansburg. The first one is this coming Sunday, December 2nd, in the afternoon. I think it's 3:00 to 5:00. The following Thursday, December 13th, also in the afternoon, I believe it's 4:30 to 6:30. And then the dedication on Friday, the 21st. The open house is from 12:00 to 5:00, but the dedication will be at 3:00. And I bring this up because a lot of people wonder what Habitat does and how it helps people who don't have as many means as many other people, and they're pretty fabulous houses. That's all I have.
Supervisor Shepherd?
No report.
Supervisor King?
I don't have no report, but I wasn't against giving them $25,000. I was just against putting all of it back.
Totally understand.
We, we've been talking about this garage for how many years? I've been here five years. The county's owned this land for how long? Thank you.
Couple of quick things. One, we have a, oh, Skip's, Vice Chair Demots, sorry.
Put the solar on the garage.
No report.
Okay, now that I haven't skipped you. A couple of quick things. We do have a meeting that's going to be held out at the Animal Care and Adoption Center in regards to Yellow Sulfur Road, and that's coming up Thursday at 6:00. And if you're interested in Yellow Sulfur Road, please come out and have your input in, in regards to that. We also have a community meeting, I believe, out of Pricesfork as well, and is that at 7:00?
One to seven.
One to seven. Thank you very much for that.
So, if you get there at 7:00, you're going to miss it.
Yes. The other thing I wanted to share, about the same time that we started the process of collecting taxes, Carroll County started the process, they retained Sands Anderson. I received an email from Reeve Broton. At this point in time, Sands Anderson has brought in $257,424.64. So, about a quarter of a million dollars. And I know that the last time we got the report, it was about $16,000, and so I'm looking forward to an update from the treasurer to give us a better idea of how much has been brought in, and if it's somewhere similar to the quarter of a million dollars that has been brought in by Sands Anderson. There being nothing else, this meeting is adjourned.